All right, good evening and welcome to our Board of Education monthly meeting. I'd like to turn to Board Member Charal, if you would open us up.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will begin tonight's meeting by remembering two students who passed away earlier this school year. Although we celebrate their lives and the positive impact they made on the Guilford County School family, our hearts are extended in grief to their loved ones. On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to extend our deepest condolences to the families, friends, and teachers of Josiah McCollum and Roberto Garrett Carcamo.
Dudley High School senior Josiah McCollum leaves behind a legacy of quiet strength, unwavering kindness, and profound intelligence with a heart full of dreams and aspiration to become an electrician. He embarked on a journey fueled by determination and hard work. To those who knew him best, he was a shining example of perseverance and dedication. Josiah's gently spirited and thoughtful nature touched the lives of many, forming an unbreakable bond with a strong support group of friends who stood by him through thick and thin. His presence will forever be cherished and deeply missed. His legacy of kindness and resilience will continue to inspire all at the great James B. Dudley High School and beyond.
Roberto Esteban Garrett Carcamo was a dynamic young man and an exceptional student at Southern High. Fighting his condition, though arduous, never stopped him from demonstrating his personality and his intellect. Entering high school is an important milestone, as it was in 2022 when Esteban transitioned to Southern Guilford High. Although he was confined to home and hospital and was not physically able to enter the school building, Esteban influenced all who worked with him, never backing down from a challenge and always giving his education his all. His passing was tragic, but we were blessed to know him. His teachers and school administrators are grateful for his sense of humor, his unwavering devotion to improving his knowledge and abilities, and the levity he provided in the face of an impossible situation. Although we were only privileged to know these students for a brief amount of time, in their own ways, they helped to create heartwarming memories that will be cherished forever. To honor these students, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we would like to invite any family members, any school representatives, any friends that are here so that the Board can offer their condolences. Let's continue by recognizing our February Employee of the Month, Clinton Kellum. Will you please come to the podium? There you are. Clinton Kellum is in his first year as Counseling Office Support and Registrar at Northeast High, but already he is making an impact. The Northeast High alumnus was recognized for his efforts as the February Guilford County School Employee of the Month. He was nominated by Counselor Chiquita Alexander, who wrote, "If you looked in the dictionary beside the definition of resourceful, you would see a picture of Clinton Kellum." He has come into our counseling office and rearranged, sorted, painted, digitized, and organized us into a well-oiled machine. It is hard to believe that in his first year in the role, as he has adjusted so well to the demands of the school and community. He is to be commended for his forward thinking, quick wit, and know-how. He is an amazing addition. Clinton received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s, and during the month of February, your photo will be displayed in the district's central offices at Northeast High and in the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I would like to ask Board Member Deborah Napper to read aloud the certificate honoring Clinton. I know that Board Member Linda Welborn, who is the board member of that district, wishes that she could be here in person to congratulate you. Deborah?
So the Guilford County Board of Education presents a certificate of recognition to Clinton Kellum at Northeast High for Employee of the Month for February of 2024. And of course, it's signed by Dr. Oakley and our Chairperson, Deana Hayes-Green. Bring this down to you.
Everything that Ms. Alexander said is true. I have to, yeah. But it's batched with an amazing team that I work with, and that's not just in the school. I had Ms. Mitchell at Southern was the person that I went and spent my training time with. And in one day, she showed me more than I could ever take in at one time. But she's also gonna answer that phone if I call her, so she will always help me. But I've, I don't have to reach far to find an answer. So I have an amazing support team around me, including my family and my mother, who is here tonight, who has also been in the school system for almost 30 years now with Guilford County. So saying that, I'm gonna follow in her footsteps, hopefully, and be here just as long.
All right, well, we'd like to give you a round of applause. And we'd also like to personally congratulate you, your family, and any school representatives that are here with you. Thank you. So if you can just have your folks come on up here? Unfortunately, our Volunteer of the Month, Mr. Charles Elder, could not be with us tonight, so we will recognize him during our meeting next month. And finally, tonight, we honor a group of employees who are doing the important work of supporting our students' well-being. Would Dr. Alex Devore, Executive Director of Mental and Behavioral Health Services, and Dr. Robin Ankeny, Director of Psychological Services, please come to the podium? Guilford County Schools was awarded a proficient designation in the National Association of School Psychologists Excellence in School Psychological Services Awards. Proficient is the second highest level in the E S P S recognition system. Guilford County Schools was one of only four districts in the country to qualify for the designation this year and one of only 14 districts in the country since 2020 to receive it. The honor will remain current for five years. To be named proficient, Guilford County Schools provided evidence that school psychologists are offering a broad range of psychological services and are working toward achieving the nationally recommended school psychologist ratio. Even though we are well below the nationally recommended school psychologist ratio, our school psychologists perform many additional services in addition to the evaluations they do throughout the year. Guilford County Schools has increased its emphasis on mental health and wellness in our schools as part of the strategic direction, and our more than 50 school psychologists are playing a significant role in our progress. We want to thank them for their dedication and leadership in this area. And at this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Kim Herby to step down and present Alex and Robin with a certificate of recognition for this achievement.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And it reads, Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition Presented to Psychological Services for receiving a proficient designation in the National Association of School Psychologists Excellence in School Psychological Services Award this February 20th, 2024. And it's signed by Dr. Oakley and our Chairwoman, Deana Hayes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Can we give them a round of applause?
All right.
Thanks. I'd first like to thank our incredible Superintendent Dr. Oakley, Chief of Student Services, Dr. Steinke, and our distinguished board. Without your support and belief in what we can offer as school psychologists, our Psych Services Department would not be able to fulfill and implement the National Association of School Psychologists, or N A S, practice model. Providing comprehensive school psychological services is instrumental to the success of our schools and our students across their academic, behavioral, socio-emotional, and mental health continuum. Our team is involved in all aspects of multi-tiered systems of supports. We support all students' academic and behavioral well-being, and we are all trained, highly qualified, mental health professionals. In addition to our dedication and advocacy to our students, we also provide numerous school and district-wide trainings on various topics and tailored consultation and coaching to administrators, teachers, and parents. Finally, I'd like to thank and acknowledge the 47 school psychologists in our district for their continued commitment and dedication to the schools, students, and families of Guilford County. The fact that we were able to earn this level of recognition, even though our ratios are nearly three times what they're recommended by the National Association of School Psychologists, is a true testament to the individuals that we have working here in G C S. They are an amazing group, and we definitely need many more of them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Devore. Yep, yep, if you come on up, we'll be glad to shake your hands. And anybody else that's here representing the department. I did want to also punch that you are well below the nationally recommended ratio in light of its outstanding service. All right, we are now at public comments. And I would like to remind our speakers that you have three minutes to make your comments. When you reach the podium, we would like to get, for you to give your name and your address. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. When the red light comes on, we would like you to wrap up and end your comments so that we can stay on schedule and hear from all of our speakers tonight. We do ask that you refrain from mentioning the name of any student or any staff. If there's something that we can assist you with, there is an appointed representative that will meet you in the lobby to assist with that. And to begin our public comment list, we have Sarah Glanville, followed by Amy Harrison.
I'm Sarah Glanville. I don't know why I'm on the public comment list.
Okay, well, I think you probably just wanted to say something, so you'll have to just come to the podium and...
I did not want to say anything.
Okay.
I don't know how I got on the list, but I am here today. I'm Sarah Glanville. I'm a town council member in Jamestown, North Carolina, just a neighbor here. And I have been appointed the liaison to the school board for the town of Jamestown. And I am here today because luckily, our meeting got moved due to scheduling conflict with the voting in our town. So I was able to come today, but typically, I will not unfortunately be able to attend because your meetings are at the exact same time as our meetings. So, sorry, I was just caught off guard, but I really appreciate you all having me today.
Well, thank you. Thank you for letting us know. Welcome, thank you. Amy Harrison, followed by Lizzie Biddle. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Amy Harrison, and my address is 7385 Wood Springs Drive in Witsit, North Carolina. I'm a special education teacher at Reedie Fork and a proud member of the North Carolina Association of Educators. I'd like to speak with you tonight about the discussion to select a vendor to outsource our substitutes. I've talked with some of my colleagues from Forsyth County since they have outsourced the hiring of substitutes, just like we are considering. One person shared that Winston-Salem-Forsyth pays hefty fees with the promise of filling vacancies, but have not, they have not shown that they can. They, and that they continue to have a lot of vacancies in their subs. Another shared that it was a lengthy process to get hired by their chosen provider, E E S, and that recruiters are hard to get in touch with if they have questions or in the H R department when they have questions about their benefits, their pay, anything like that. Another shared that benefits are about one-half of the paycheck per month. Quite a few people said that they quit working in Winston-Salem and came to Guilford because we haven't done that yet. Some positives that I did hear, because I did hear some, were the benefits that the substitutes could qualify for when they were working for E E S and that they are paid more often. But those are the only two things that I'd heard that were positive. I know how hard it is to get substitutes and that so many of our staff, like interventionists, testing coordinators, teacher assistants, and curriculum facilitators, are pulled from their other duties to sub for classroom teachers or students are dispersed to other already large classes at the grade level. I personally don't want it to become harder to get substitutes because I know how valuable our subs are in the buildings. As a leader in the Public School Workers Union, when I hear about a move to privatize anything, it scares me. I know other districts have tried privatizing custodial staff, and there have been more problems than positive aspects. And I'll save my comments about school vouchers for another night because I don't have very much time left. I would urge you to take these perspectives from people who have worked with this company into account before you make any final decisions. As always, thank you for your time and attention tonight and for your service to the staff, students, and families of Guilford County Schools.
Thank you. Lizzie Biddle, followed by Monica Walker. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, esteemed Board of Education members, Guilford County School staff, and my fellow community members. My name is Lizzie Biddle, and I live on Ainsworth Drive, close to Guilford College in District 3. I want to just take a moment to congratulate you all, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Oakley, and your staff on some of the prestigious statewide and national recognition Guilford County Schools continues to achieve, including the National Association of School Psychologists, an exodus that we just also got to witness. I had just seen recognition of the North Carolina School Public Relations Association, recognizing Guilford County Schools for your outstanding and effective communication. So there's so much to be proud of, and a huge tremendous thanks to all of you as our public school leadership, the teachers, and the staff. You all have given us, as community members, including myself, lots to be proud of. I know that it is in all of our interests to have strong public schools. Strong public schools lean to informed, intellectually curious, and engaged citizens. Graduates of strong public schools go on to be strong employees, nurses, nonprofit workers, city staff, grocery store clerks, bank tellers, and so on. And ultimately, strong public schools lead to strong contributing members of our communities, something we all benefit from. One of the ongoing persistent and complex challenges schools all across the country face, including our own, is an ever-widening achievement gap. You can look across our own countywide data, state, and national data to see that unfortunately, decade after decade, we have left Black and Brown students behind. Differences in those student learning and academic outcomes based on race cannot be explained by socioeconomic status or single-headed households or whether a particular community does or does not value education. These substantial differences in student outcomes require new ways of thinking, targeted and long-term interventions, and cross-sector approaches. Unfortunately, they have not and cannot be solved by simply increasing the number of weekend food backpack programs or supplying more mentors to at-risk kids. I am so grateful to those of you on the Board and to the Superintendent and the staff of the school who have made the issue of equity and ensuring that all students thrive and can benefit from all the great things Guilford County Schools has to offer a top priority. I urge you to continue to place equity at the center of your work and at the center of your decisions. Equity matters in the selection of curriculum for our schools. We should have courses presenting historical truths and the cultural realities of all racial groups. It matters in decisions regarding finance and school facility construction. The Board should always vote to ensure an equitable distribution of funds that close gaps and not exacerbate them. Schools, strong schools, benefit us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Walker, followed by Michael Alessco. Welcome.
Good evening. Dr. Oakley, Chairwoman, Deana Hayes-Green, and to all of the members of Guilford County School Board. I pulled my glasses down, and you notice I put them right back up. Can't figure this out, right? But I am Monica Walker, and I live at 608 Martin Street. And I'm proud to say that I am a grandmother of three of Guilford County School students, a six- and a nine-year-old who attend Morehead Elementary School, and a 16-year-old who's a sophomore at the Early College at Guilford. I am a former employee of Guilford County Schools, a member of the Guilford Anti-Racist Alliance, and a member of Public School Strong. I am a strong supporter of school district leadership and a proponent for all things equitable. I make it my business to show up to these meetings to cheer you on because I know you have a hard job and because education is the centerpiece of our lives, and you all have been charged with one of the most challenging responsibilities in this country. It is for this reason that the extremists in this country, in this state and in this county, continue to take jabs at your leadership. Theirs is a deliberate attempt to undermine and even to destroy public education. The latest of these battlefronts is now the fight to preserve the funding of our schools. Guilford County Schools has been underfunded by the North Carolina General Assembly for over a decade. We are calling on all leaders to stand up to the supermajority in our Legislative Assembly to protect our schools from the crisis conditions that their attacks and cuts are creating on our schools. Now they are seeking to redirect more funding from public schools to support school choice via voucher expansion programs. Vouchers undermine strong public education and student opportunity. They take scarce funding from public schools, which serve 90% of students in this county, and give it to private schools, institutions that are not accountable to tax payers. There is zero statistical significance that voucher programs improve overall student success, and some programs have been shown to have a negative effect for students receiving a voucher. The pattern of discrimination continues with vouchers today. Many families of color find these schools and their programs to be very racially discriminative. These schools, unlike public schools, can, and some do, limit their admission based on race, gender, sexual orientation, ability, and other number of factors. I will say to you tonight that if we're serious about doing what's right for every child's future and every one of you took an oath that said you were here to serve the good of all students and all means all. So let's do what works. Let's support public schools so that every student has inviting classrooms, modern technology and textbooks, and class sizes that are small enough for one-on-one attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Alessco, followed by Cherry Pickett. Welcome.
Good evening to the Superintendent, the Board, my fellow substitutes, and everybody else in the room. My name is Michael Alessco, and I am substitute teacher. I've worked in Guilford County Schools off and on since 2000, that's 24 years. I've also worked as a sub-teacher and a teacher in three counties in Florida, Orange County, Broward, and Seminole. I oppose the proposal to outsource substitute teachers, and I'm angry that so many teachers don't know about this. You've done no outreach to the teachers or the subs about your plan. In 2020, I researched a book I was writing called Die, Substitute Die: Just Be Back on the First Day of School, which is about the respect and disrespect of sub-teachers across the country and the disparities in pay. It takes a certain kind of person to both teach and subteach children today, and then he can't make it or just don't want the job. Many don't know how to bond with the students to get the cooperation they need. What subs want are money, discipline, to be part of the education process, and respect. What subs don't want to be are rent-a-subs, which outsourcing will make them feel. In Orlando, I worked for Kelly Educational Services, who handled the Orange County Public School staffing. I can tell you the pay was low, and it was an exasperating experience running around when school was over trying to find an authorized person to sign my time slip. Kelly ran like a Gestapo. In my research, I found that wherever these staffing companies go, whether it's E S S, Kelly Educational, or EduStaff, the answer is the same. The pay is low or it drops. If you think these companies are the answer to your sub-staffing issues, no matter what they tell you, they're wrong. And dropping the subs' money will turn more people away, especially you lose the experienced ones. Right now, Guilford County pays non-certified substitute teachers 130 a day or 1733 per hour. The national average of subpay is at 2031. That's $20.31, according to A I. That means Guilford County pays $2.98 less per hour than the national average. Only the monthly bonus brings Guilford County pay up to over the national average per week. Winston-Salem only pays $16 per hour, and some subs have been complaining, as you've probably heard. I beg with you, please do not do this. Do not outsource us. It's going to cause a big problem. And if that's what you want to do, you need to talk to everybody, get their input, especially the subs. Let them know, take their concerns, and especially the teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alessco. Cherry Pickett, followed by Emma Shell. Cherry Pickett, followed by Emma Shell.
Good evening. Cherry Pickett, 7804 Robinson Road, Summerfield. Does everyone remember the Y2K scare? We were told that we had to update and buy new computers and prepare for an economic collapse. It was predicted to happen on January 1st, the year 2000. We spent billions of dollars getting ready for that, and it didn't happen. Global warming is not a crisis. It will cost billions for electric buses for the schools. The rise in temperatures is caused by nature, and it will eventually come back down. Plants like CO2. The economy is better with warmer temperatures. If there are 100 scientists to say that it is a crisis, there's an equal amount who will say it isn't. Only God can control the weather, and I think it's arrogant for many people to think that they can affect the sun, clouds, wind, or the temperature. Just think, even if America did everything that we're being told to fight global warming, and it would not make a difference in comparison to the size of the Earth. Forty percent of the cost of electric buses is the battery. The lithium-ion battery packs are made up of a group of cells inside a battery compartment and contain flammable liquid electrolyte. The more electricity that it takes to charge the battery, the higher the number of cells, and there's a higher possibility of a spark creating a fire. CBS reported in August 2023 that there isn't enough information for firefighters to effectively put out lithium-ion battery fires. Since 2019, lithium-ion battery fires have caused 200 deaths and 300 injuries in San Francisco and New York. Think about the amount of electricity it will take to charge these batteries. The cost of the charging stations, and then the cost of the batteries, are hundreds of thousands of dollars. And what will this do to the electric power grid? I have, this is a 50-page report, and it has six pages of references. And it's actually a report that human activity is not the cause of global warming. Was that three minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Well, I just have one last thing that I wanted to say, is that if you Google Joe Rogan and cobalt mines, you'll learn how lithium-ion batteries are made.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emma Shell, followed by our final speaker, Ashton Garcia. Welcome.
Forgive me, I am just a touch nervous. My name is Emma Shell. I live at 4589 Worthing Chase Drive, which is considered the southeast Guilford High School and Middle School District, but that is not the school I'm here for tonight. I have had the privilege to go to the Early Middle College at GTCC Jamestown for three years, and I'm coming to you tonight to bring up my concerns about your new busing requirements that you've brought up for our campuses. As an early childhood education major, I couldn't help but look at them and be okay with it. I realize as a school system nationally that you're short on bus drivers for this year, for next year, for the year after. I promise, we understand. But I'd like to bring forward some of the concerns my fellow students, staff, and parents, some who are here tonight, have with this plan. We were given a paper and a map by the county with the following statement, and I'll be reading the returning student statement. Returning 10th through 12th grade students with established bus stops outside these attendance zones will be allowed to keep their home and neighborhood stop. These students have been grandfathered. However, if a returning student has never requested transportation or has an address change, a new stop will be made, and transportation, a new stop will not be made, and transportation will not be provided unless part of this model. This brings up a lot of concerns for our school. Obviously, these newer students, the way the district map was cut, have a lesser chance of getting into their school based on where they live, and that concerns, obviously, the GTCC mission being rooted in equity, and of course, creating a community that looks like the outside inside your school system. But I'd also like to mention our students like H., who had transportation last year via their grandmother, who unfortunately passed, and they had to get a bus, or students who had to move to a parent's change in job, or like the student I mentor at Southeast, J., whose life goal is to get his HVAC certification, but he can't get transport to G-Tech because his mom's trying not to face homelessness and can only afford to live in government housing outside of the GTCC zone. Life happens. All families and situations are different, and this ruling doesn't account for that. Our next question is also why only the GTCC early colleges were affected by this busing issue. If there's truly an issue with early college busing, we would like to see it retroactive across all the early colleges and magnet academies. It's not just us who are your biggest puller of numbers. In fact, places like Grimsley have larger bachelorette programs. We also would like to offer up that if the county is low on buses and drivers, then we as students would like to be offered hubs to get to their campus of choice, because they are a choice school, and they deserve help with that new transportation burden for families. We'd also like clarification and writing from the board about siblings and neighbors of children with established stops, and how to apply to children there on lines where the map was drawn. Overall, I just hope that we can find a solution together, and that we can help students like me get a degree and have opportunities that they're allotted. Thank you.
You did fine. Thank you. And our final speaker, Ashton Garcia. Sort of our final speaker. Ashton Garcia, followed by Aubrey Revanel.
Good evening. My name is Ashton Garcia, and I live at 1812 Madison Avenue. I currently have two children at Lindley, and next year, all three of my kids will be at Lindley Elementary. I am part of a growing number of members of the community that would like to advocate for the historical preservation of the historic portion of Lindley Elementary. Lindley Elementary is an important civic landmark of Sunset Hills, Lindley Park, and other surrounding communities. Its architecture commands attention in a way that very new, very many new schools never will. Try to picture any recently built elementary school as a historical architectural landmark. Lindley Elementary has achieved that status. In 1928, the school board hired the very talented architect Charles Hartman to produce a quality building with a great sense of place. That same architect designed Dudley, Jefferson Building, and numerous other historical structures that we wouldn't dream of demolishing. That's because history is important, and once it's gone, you can't get it back. A sense of history and community is what drew us to the neighborhood in the first place. You see, my home, like Lindley Elementary, was built in 1928. It's more than just a coincidence. It's a shared legacy of timeless architecture that has shaped our community for generations. Lindley is an integral part of our sense of belonging. Unlike many of the more rural schools, Lindley is a true neighborhood school. Kids walk and bike to school every morning and enter through the same doors that students have entered for almost 100 years. Lindley isn't just a place of learning, it's a symbol of our shared identity, a beacon of pride that generations of residents have cherished. But Lindley's value goes beyond sentimentality. It's a practical investment for our future. Its sturdy construction and timeless design offers a good foundation. It is possible to upgrade the building systems and infrastructure while maintaining critical features like its light-filled rooms, high ceilings, and original brick exterior. It should be possible to preserve the building and its character while supporting our current educational needs, and it's been done before. The key is to go into the project open to the possibility that a workable solution does exist, instead of taking a path of demolition and then erecting sort of a cookie-cutter modern version of an elementary school. We don't live in a cooker-cutter community. We have a clear sense of community character that makes our area very desirable to live in, and we're proud of our school, and we do want to make it better. I want to encourage you to proactively look at this project from the beginning now with the perspective that renovation is doable, especially renovation of at least the historic section of our building with the combination of the new addition. Done well, the renovation of Lindley Elementary could lead to the continued use for another 95 years, could bolster the continued vitality of our neighborhood well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Aubrey Revanel.
Good evening. My name is Aubrey Revanel. I live at 200 East Greenway Drive North in Greensboro, North Carolina. And I come before you today, not only as a concerned citizen, but as someone deeply connected to the history of this community. My ties to Lindley run deep. I'm both an alum and a parent of children who attend this cherished institution. I represent an ever-growing group of people like Ashton. Sorry, my phone just went off. I represent an ever-growing group of people in our community that are advocating for the preservation of the original John Van Lindley Elementary School building. I stand here, as I stand here, memories flood my mind of my own experiences at Lindley, the laughter echoing through the halls, the friendship forged on the playground, and the invaluable lessons learned within those classroom walls. Lindley isn't just a building, it's a living, breathing testament to the generations of lives it has touched. So I implore you to consider the preservation of the Lindley Elementary Building as we move forward with this expansion project. This isn't just about bricks and mortar. It's about preserving a piece of our shared history, a place that holds countless stories and memories to so many in our community. There's a unique beauty in Lindley's architecture, a charm that speaks to a bygone era. It's not, it's more than just aesthetics, it's a connection to our past, a reminder of where we've come from and the values that have shaped us. But it's not just about nostalgia, it's practicality, too. Lindley holds immense potential for adaptive reuse, offering a chance to create a space that meets the needs of our community today while honoring its rich heritage. The careful planning, with careful planning, we can breathe new life into Lindley, ensuring that it remains a vibrant hub, learning, and community engagement for generations to It's worth noting that we have numerous instances where historic schools have been meticulously renovated, integrating modern amenities while preserving their distinctive character at a net neutral, or in some instances, positive impact on total cost. By repurposing Lindley, we're not just saving a building, we're making a statement about our commitment to sustainability and responsible stewardship of our environment and its resources. It's a chance to lead by example, to show future generations that we value our planet and the legacy we leave behind. I urge you to consider the preservation of Lindley Elementary, not just as a project, but a promise, a promise to honor our past, celebrate our community's heritage, and build a better future for all who call this place home. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public speaking portion of our meeting. We are now at approval of the agenda. There is an item that we have added to the agenda, item J, approving a change order for the 2020 bond management agreement.
And board members, as you'll recall, we didn't finish closed session, so we will have a second closed session at the end of the business meeting, and then we'll come back to take action.
Thank you. So with those two items, Diane, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, we're now at the consent agenda, Dr. Oakley. Items D through J have been, are also asked to be pulled so that we can have further discussion.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening consent agenda includes the following items. A, Approval of January 24 Meeting Minutes. B, Personnel Action Report. C, 2324 Budget Amendments and Transfers Report. D, Substitute Management Solution. E, Contractual Agreement with Associated Heating and Air Conditioning for the Southwest Guilford High School HVAC Project. F, The Contractual Agreement for Design Services with Clark Nixon for the Sternberger Elementary School Bond Project. G, Contractual Agreement for Design Services with Mosley Architects for the Allen J. Elementary School Bond Project. H, The Contractual Agreement for Design Services with Evoque Studio for the Swan 612 School Bond Project. I, Authorization to Negotiate Construction Management at Risk Pre-Construction Contract for Six Bond Projects. And J, Change Order for 2020 Bond Program Management Agreement.
Move the consent agenda items A through C with the removal of D through J for further discussion.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you. Diane? On items A through C. Chrissy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Dina, yes. So A through C pass unanimously. Item D, I'll turn to board member Napper.
Yes, I apologize. Unfortunately, we're under the weather in the Napper household when the presentation on the substitute outsourcing was given, so I missed that information. If I could please get a rundown, and also, there are several voters and people have spoken to me who are asking for a little bit more clearer definition, if we could get it, Dr. Oakley, please, of what exactly it is that we're voting on tonight.
Sure, I think I'm happy to provide an overview. If there's follow-up questions, we can certainly turn to the experts who are here. Essentially, what we shared at the retreat is our state has recognized the need to modernize our systems. We right now currently have very antiquated systems that often include manual data entry on multiple occasions in order to bring on substitutes, et cetera. This item this evening is not to contract with a vendor. This item this evening is to explore different management solutions that would be a part of this modernization process. It does not mean that the board has to choose to do that, but it does give our staff the ability to explore what solutions are out there. Our initial investigation is that we still control the rate of pay, we still control the onboarding, teachers still choose the subs that they want in their building, subs still choose the schools they want to sub in, and principals still have the same authority and it's an experience. We certainly understand the need to further engage. This is just allowing us the opportunity to explore what those solutions would be. It does not put us in contract with any specific vendor. That's just where we are in this business modernization process.
Okay. So are we looking at something like a staffing company, or what this comes across in the presentation I read was more like software, like streamlining software?
It's a management system. So right now, we have lots, we have internal staff who have other jobs who are manually keying in substitutes as we hire, then we have substitutes who are paid as much as seven weeks after their point of service. We understand there's pros and cons to all of it. This is just to explore what the options are out there.
But that will still leave, like, in effect, the hiring and curing of the substitutes, for lack of a better expression, intake. There we go. Intake that will still be done by Guilford County Schools.
It would depend on what we contract for. So, I mean, I think we've heard pros and cons from neighboring counties. This just gives us the opportunity to see what does and what does not exist, and does it fit the need or not.
Okay. And then we can put something out there and get more feedback from the public.
The board would have to vote on a contract regardless, so this is, this is just the exploration.
Okay. Thank you.
Diane, followed by Alan.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to table item D.
I was just looking for my little shortcut. Huh? I don't know. All right, if there's no second, then that dies. Any other question, Diane? Alan?
I think this has been answered, but just want to emphasize that under this, approval of this would still allow for the kind of engagement, communication, and evaluation that Mr. Olesko and Ms. Harrison spoke to in public comments, correct?
Yes. I mean, I think that's what we want to do, is learn that information, but we can't do that until we explore what solutions are out there and decide if they're the right fit or not.
All right, so the way I'd like to do this is the way in which they were asked to be pulled, item D, and then E through I, and then J. So is there a motion on item D?
Move the item.
All right. Diane? Chrissy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Mike?
Deborah? Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Dina, yes. That passes by a vote of seven to one. We are now at items E through I, and I'll turn to Mr. Logan.
I just want to make sure we're clear on that item. It's going to be $3,444,000, correct?
Yes, that's the amount of the bid.
Which means it's not going to change.
No, it's not.
Go into a meeting later on and say it was more.
No, that's the amount of, on bid date.
Thank you. That's it.
For all of those? E through I? That's what you had asked to be pulled?
Well, I'd like to ask, we can lump them all together.
J is going to be separate, so we're pulling E through I.
Okay. I just want to make sure that on the figures provided in this document, that these are going to be the figures that we are going to be paying out for these services and for these contracts. One contract with the Allen J, that will be used for architect, will be used for Sumner, correct?
That's correct. And the board's already approved that contract previously, which is why this one is close to $700,000 less, because we're going to be using the same design.
Right. Thank you.
So, Michael, you include Item J and E through J total?
That will be fine.
Okay.
Okay. I want Item J to stay out, please.
Okay.
We can make a motion.
So is there a motion to approve Items E through I?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I'll start this way. Kim?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. That passes unanimously by a vote of eight to zero. Item J, Diane?
I just want to be clear that I feel like this is a money grab, and I cannot support it. I think we need to look very carefully at how information is used and shared. I can't, I can't abide by this. And that's all I'm going to say publicly, okay?
Okay. Alan?
This does not affect my vote, but I did want to ask Dr. Monk, since it was raised regarding the cost, that the vote we just made does not preclude the fact that there could be a change order if the scope of work changes on any of those projects, correct?
That's correct.
I just want to make sure that that is stated so that there's no question about staff management if that does happen.
No other questions? Yes. Okay.
Dr. Monk, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but for our understanding, in a simple way, tell us exactly what triggers a change order and when staff feels that a change order should be brought before us.
Any change to the original scope could trigger a change order, and that could be the time that's associated with the contract or the dollar value.
Okay. And is there a threshold where that has to be brought before us, or any change order has to be brought for us?
So we report quarterly to the board all change orders associated with construction contracts, and then the ones that are approved by the board, there is a threshold for all contracts that are over $500,000 that we bring, change orders that represent that amount or 10% of what the original contract was.
Okay. All right. Because I think that needs to be said, because there are some people who are going to think that any change order has to come before us. But there is a trigger, 500,000? Or 10%?
Or 10% of four projects that are over 500,000. But we report all change orders to the board quarterly.
Thank you.
Chrissy?
I have a quick question I didn't think about previously in closed session. This change order is approximately, and I'm rounding a little bit with my math, about approximately 80% of what the initial cost for these services was, or asking for about 80% more. What's the average percentage of change orders that we tend to get from companies? Is it usually this drastic an amount, or is it usually, you know, if 10% is a threshold, where do we usually fall with those change orders? As far as percent increase?
Yeah. So I think what's different about this versus a construction contract change order, which is typically around 5% to 6% if everything is running right in a project, is this is for the services versus building, a building that has labor and materials that are associated with it. So all of their, what they're requesting is basically for their hours that they worked, that's different from what they had estimated or told us that we were contracting for them to work, times whatever their hourly rate is. So it's a little bit different calculation.
And is this a typical increase in line with others for other project management services?
So, ask that question again.
So I, I understand what you're saying about construction kind of operates in a different world than management of the project itself. So when we've had other projects where the management costs have increased and they've asked for a change order, is the percent increase that we're looking at with this request in line with previous percent increases that have been asked for?
I can't speak for every situation. I think this is certainly unique. In my previous time here, we didn't have program managers. The last bond that I ran here was all done in-house, so I can't, I don't really have a point of reference as it relates to here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Attorney R.D. Bolick to explain the sort of change orders that are a part of this item on the agenda.
Sure. First, I do want to correct one thing. The change order request is actually for about 50%, not 80% of their original contract value. And the request is to increase their fee due to additional services they perform on account of increases to the scope of the various projects associated with 2020 bond, and also increases to the duration of those projects. In other words, the scope increased, meaning there was more to do because the projects themselves grew larger, and the time increased partly because the scope increased, but also because of other external factors. And so the time they spent and devoted to working on these projects was greater than what was anticipated when they signed the contract back in 2020.
Thank you, Michael.
So, Dr. Monk, previously in other bonds, we were not using risk management companies to do them?
No, we've, so program management, we, we had a couple in 2000. We had one in 2003. I was just not responsible for those bond referendums in particular. But in 2008, we did not have a total program manager that ran the entire bond. We did that in-house.
And the purpose of the risk?
It's fair to note that construction manager at risk is a relative, I mean, I say relatively, and you guys know I've been doing this since 1990, so everything's relatively new to me. But it is a relatively new concept. It was the original way that all public contracting was done allowed for four divisions of any contract, which was electrical, HVAC, general construction, and plumbing. And so they, you bid those four, and that was it. And you managed, you could hire a construction manager that was not construction manager at risk. You, you used to bid things all differently. The laws have changed over time to facilitate construction management at risk, because many governmental entities find that a more comfortable way to contract.
And to be clear, what we're discussing now is the program manager, not the construction management at risk delivery manager.
But one of the purposes of having a program manager in at risk is to keep costs under control?
So I think there's, I can't speak to why we selected to have a program manager a part of this referendum, other than the size of it, not having a lot of staff, project managers, because if we had those project managers, we'd have to pay benefits, retirement, a whole host of other things. But in both situations, the idea is that we would move the projects along as expeditiously as possible. I think that Mr. Bolick has already spoken to, though, there were items outside of the program manager's control, as well as there were things that the district asked to be changed that were associated with the project for which they're asking for this change order.
One last question. Large number of these change orders, when did they occur?
They were back in 2021, 2022 is whenever they first reached out to the district.
All right. So two years ago, three years ago. Correct. Thank you.
Kim?
Just a point of reference that I remember when it was brought to us, that we needed this type of management, because in the past, it was very difficult. We, and we did not have the staff to manage this scope of work, and that was one reason why it was recommended to us. So therefore, I would like to move to approve a change order for 2020 Bond Program Management Agreement with high caps and C2 and the amount of $3,930,000 for additions to scope and time.
This is second.
Thank you. Diane?
Absolutely not.
Chrissy?
Nope.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes, with the asterisk of understanding that the only other option is some manner of litigation.
Michael? Kim?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. That passes by a vote of five to three. We are now at comments from the chair. Let me see if I can find them in here somewhere. Good evening. Kindergarten registration is now open. If your child will be five years old by August 31st of this year, now is the time to register. Registration takes place online at gcsnc-schoolment.net. Families have just a few more days to apply to a Guilford County School Choice School or program for the upcoming year. The Choice Application period will close on Friday, February 23rd at 5:00 p.m. To apply, also go to visit gcsnc-schoolment.net. February is Career and Technical Education Month, also known as CTE Month, and it's a perfect time to remind our families of the plentiful CTE options we have in our schools, including our signature academies. Career and technical education programs prepare students for in-demand, high-skill, and high-wage careers. According to a recent report to the State Board of Education, Guilford County school students earned the highest number of credentials in the state for NurseAid One and for Intuit QuickBooks Certified Users. Guilford County school students earned 8,250 credentials last year, up from 7,118 the year prior. Thank you to all families and staff members who have joined us in celebrating Love the Bus Month. If you think you might love working in transportation, please attend the upcoming Transportation Department Job Fair on Thursday, this Thursday, February 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Bus Garage at 131 Franklin Boulevard. Also on Thursday, Shift Ed, I think this is the Community Foundation of North Carolina, it's the College Fund?
The College Foundation of North Carolina.
And the Guilford County Schools Counseling Department will host a spring into FAFSA event from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the FAFSA is how, you know, families apply for financial aid for students entering college. This is going to be at the Circle Center in High Point. The event will help families navigate the FAFSA changes this year. Families should be, bring a charged laptop, and food will be provided. Visit shift-ed.org to register. So that's shift-ed.org. Tuesday, March 5th, is our state's primary election, and many Guilford County schools will serve as voting locations. To ensure the safety of our students and address traffic concerns, 31 schools will transition to remote learning on that day, and the impacted schools have been notified of this change. Meals will be available for pickup. Thank you, and this concludes my remarks. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening. I was honored to attend the annual February 1 Breakfast at North Carolina A&amp;T State University in recognition of the brave actions of the A&amp;T Four on February 1, 1960. Many of our students participated in a march from the A&amp;T campus to the International Civil Rights Center and Museum, where the Woolworths' counter sit and took place. Our students are seen, seeing, and being inspired by our history, and that will help prepare them to be the leaders of tomorrow. Earlier today, I had the pleasure of attending the statue unveiling for Henry and Shirley Frye. The Fryes are a remarkable couple who have made a tremendous impact on our community through their activism and advocacy. They have been proud supporters of Guilford County Schools, and I was honored to have Justice Frye conduct the swearing-in ceremony when I became superintendent. Their influence will certainly continue to be felt here in Greensboro and in the state for many years to come. GCS will host two Topping Out ceremonies in the coming weeks to celebrate the last steel beam being raised into position at school construction projects. The Topping Out Ceremony for Kaiser Middle is scheduled for February 22nd, and the Ceremony for Faust Elementary is set for March 4th. Both buildings are expected to welcome students beginning in January 2025. National School Counselors Week was celebrated earlier this month, from February 5th to the 9th. School counselors are also a vital part of the success of our students and our schools. They demonstrate leadership, advocacy, and collaboration. School counselors facilitate a comprehensive school counseling program to develop students' academic achievement, social and emotional wellness, and career development. Thank you to our school counselors for the work they do every day to promote learning, safety, and healthy environments for all students. Friday, March 8th, is International Social Emotional Learning Day, and schools and departments will be planning celebrations of Social Emotional Learning, or SEL. A district-wide celebration is scheduled for Saturday, March 9th, at 11:00 a.m. at Dudley High School. This day will help families learn about how the SEL frameworks help strengthen the health, wellness, and safety of schools in GCS, and we encourage you to join us. Finally, let me congratulate our district relations team for its performance at the North Carolina School Public Relation Association's Blue Ribbon Awards earlier this month. Our communications team took home an impressive 45 state awards for excellence in school communications, including two Best of the Best awards. This concludes my remarks.
Dr. Oakley, we are now at the 2022-2023, St. Angie's getting all geared up, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Welcome, Angie.
Good evening, Board Members.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're bringing to you our 2022-2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and we have Greg Miller, who is a director with Forvis, who's going to present our report this evening. And if you will let him get through the presentation, we'll answer questions once he's through.
That's fine. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Not quite sure of the technology to go on the slides. Good evening. My name is Greg Miller. I'm a director with Forvis. And first of all, just thank you for entrusting Forvis to be your external auditing services. This is your annual comprehensive financial report. I believe everyone has a copy of this. I'm not going to read through this, because we don't have time for that. But I am going to kind of go through the scope of the audit, the results of the audit, and at the back end, I can answer any questions that you might have. So this kind of runs through the agenda. So we were engaged to perform an audit of the district's financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. That financial audit is performed in accordance with auditing standards, which are the general auditing standards any for-profit, non-for-profit governmental entity auditors would have to follow, as well as an additional layer of auditing standards known as the government auditing standards, that are just unique from a government environment, that requires additional independence requirements, that I be independent of the school district of management, et cetera, as well as some other compliance-related testing that we'll kind of go through. In performing our audit, we do design procedures to determine whether the financial statements are materially accurate. This is, we don't look at every single transaction the school board goes through in every year to validate each individual's single transaction. It is a risk-based approach audit. Based on a risk assessment, we design procedures to mitigate those risks in determining whether the financial statements prepared by management under your oversight are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards. As a result of our audit, we do issue an opinion. So this is a thick document, maybe a dozen pages in here. Our Forvis letter head, the rest is Guilford's information. But reading that information, the main snippet here is our opinion, which is a clean opinion, a common vernacular would be clean, a unmodified opinion on the financial statements that they are presented in conformity to generally accepted accounting standards. So that's the type of opinion you are looking for from your external auditor. As I mentioned, there are some compliance items that we have to look at. This slide is specifically over federal major programs. For any federal grants, we have to test certain programs at given intervals. So on the slide are the two programs from a federal perspective that were tested this year, and the results of our testing did not identify any material non-compliance with those compliance requirements. Same thing, but from a state perspective, we have to identify Same thing, but from a state perspective, uh, we have to identify programs. So the state helps identify what programs get tested in a given year. These are the ones that were tested for fiscal year ending 6/30/23. As a result of testing those programs, we did not identify any, um, material non-compliance that would be required to be reported, uh, under the auditing standards. Government auditing standards also have additional standards for any laws, regulations within a given state. There are budget, um, uh, regulations within North Carolina. Uh, so we did have one finding that's reported in the Schedule of Question Findings as, uh, 2023 dashers. There are one for expenditures in excess of budget for the School Nutrition Fund. The next couple of slides are my required communications to those charged with governance. Uh, there's a formal document, um, that you guys also have that kind of go in detail on some of those. So I'll hit the Cliff Notes version, um, here for you. Uh, in developing any set of financial statements, management does have to take, uh, there's some estimates and some management judgment in determining what those amounts are. Not every number within your financial statements is easily tied straight to a particular invoice, a cash receipt, or a check dispersment. The most significant of those within these set of financial statements is the estimated useful life of your underlying capital assets. That's how many years will a certain asset live, and how much depreciation do we take per year? Uh, the next one would be your pension and OPEB liabilities. Those can, that's an actuarial science, and an actuary is engaged to determine what those numbers are. Uh, and then those get reported into the financial statements, and those can swing materially from year to year, uh, at, at any given point from a bunch of different inputs. The last two I'll group together, um, one's leases and one's subscription, um, uh, arrangements. Those are new standards. One was fiscal year '22, was leases was new. Subscriptions was new for fiscal year '23. Uh, and those are leases that you have out there. You have to discount those back. The estimate of what that discount rate is, uh, can impact what those numbers are. So those are the most significant estimates within these set of financial statements. We do, uh, discuss with management what their methodology was, how they determined what those estimates are, compare those against industry standards, and determining whether that's a systematic and rational manner, uh, and in line, um, with, with best practices. The next two major bullets kind of look negative on there. There's nothing negative to report. Uh, we did not have any difficulties, uh, in performing the engagement, uh, and we, or any difficulties, disagreements with management. If we were to have, uh, disagreements with management on an accounting standard, uh, or how something should be reported, we would present those to you guys as those charged with governance. I do want to take a minute and just thank Angie and Angie, um, for all their help, uh, throughout the audit process. I can only audit the information that I have received. Uh, so the timeline of getting the audit done really does lie with Angie and, and getting us the information we need that's accurate and complete the first go-round. So I really do appreciate all your help, um, working through the audit process. At the end of any given audit, there's a management representation letter, uh, that we ask management to review and sign and get back to us that's essentially in writing saying, hey, we asked you guys for this type of information. The information you gave to us is accurate and complete to the best of your knowledge, et cetera, et cetera. It's a fairly boilerplate. It doesn't change much from year to year. If management were to significantly push back in any one of those management representations, we would discuss those with you guys as those charged with governance, but we did not have any disagreements or back and forth on those type of, uh, representations. The last bullet on this slide, as I mentioned, subscription-based IT arrangements. Um, that was the new GASBY standard for this year. GASBY is the, the authority on promulgating accounting standards. That sets how we account for certain things. Uh, subscription-based technology arrangements are, uh, I think your, your cloud-hosted software systems, um, Microsoft 365 could potentially be a Cibita, um, depending on how the arrangement is. Uh, those were to bring on an asset for those particular subscriptions, which was essentially, um, netted against the liability, the future payments that you're going to make against, uh, that subscription arrangement. So it's pretty much a wash on your net position, so no significant impact. It's, it's just a large gross-up, gross-up of your capital assets and a gross-up of your liabilities that offset each other in that position. Uh, a few financial highlights from the financial statements. Um, for fiscal year '23, the state funding, uh, increased about 6% or $26 million, uh, over fiscal year '22, and that's primarily driven, uh, due to higher salaries in fiscal year, or, uh, driven by higher salaries, uh, than the prior year. As a percentage of total revenue, uh, state fundings was relatively consistent. It was pretty much flat between '22 and '23. Uh, the big change here was the federal funding decreased, uh, 60 million or approximately 31%. And that's driven by pandemic relief that were in the prior years that are not recurring this year. And we'll kind of see this trend going with ARPA money, uh, needing to be obligated by the end of this calendar year, and then expended by the end of calendar year '26. Uh, so that'll be a continuing trend, uh, for the next couple of these presentations. As a percentage of total revenue, that was at 21, that went down 21%. That was offset by county and other local funding, um, which increased about 95 million or 36% from prior year, and makes up about 36% of total revenues. So expenditures, uh, by purpose, uh, this is total expenditures, but it does exclude capital outlay. Um, total expenditures increased 62% or 7%, uh, driven primarily again by that, uh, higher payroll costs, as well as some higher transportation costs. And instructional, uh, expenditures represented 69% of total expenditures, uh, which is a decrease from about 8% of the prior year. And then other expenditures represent the remaining 31% of total expenditures, which is an increase of 24%, uh, from the prior year. Uh, general and special revenue fund balance. So at the end of the fiscal year, the general fund and special revenue fund balance is approximately 15.6 million, which is a decrease of 28% from the prior year. Uh, within that total fund balance, the portion, the, uh, the portion that was available, uh, for appropriation, uh, was 1.3 million or a 12% um, uh, decrease from fiscal year '22. And then unassigned fund balance was approximately 4.9 million, uh, which is 2.3 million less, or 33% less than the prior year. Uh, kind of continue on with fund balance. Um, total fund balance available for appropriation, uh, represents approximately 1% of total governmental expenditures, excluding capital outlay, uh, which was a 17% increase from fiscal year '22. And then unassigned fund balance represented about half a percent of total governmental expenditures, which is a decrease of 37% from prior year. From a proprietary fund side, specifically the school, uh, Food Service Fund, uh, that net position increased approximately 1.5 million over the prior year. Uh, keep in mind, on this slide, this is on the full accrual basis. I mentioned some of the more significant estimates in the financial statements is your pension and OPEB, uh, liabilities. Those can have million-dollar swings in any given year based upon the census data, the most recent mortality tables, the discount rates used. Um, so those swings are factored into these numbers, uh, which then shows that increase of that 1.5 million, um, in net position at the end of the year. Overall, revenues decreased about 10 million or 9% um, compared to the prior year. And that's primarily driven by, uh, the federal revenues, uh, and they're decreasing that pandemic aid that was in, in, in prior years for, um, uh, free meals during the pandemic. And then on the expense side, those increased approximately 7.7 million or 21%, uh, primarily driven by just the cost of food, CPI, uh, Consumer Price Index. I think everyone's pretty familiar with inflation the last couple of years, so. With that, I did just want to take a couple of moments to tell you of what's coming down the pike from an accounting standard standpoint. Uh, for those of you that have been up here for a number of years and have seen this presentation, uh, multiple times, GASBY has been very active. Over the last five, six years, there have been major new, uh, accounting standards every year for the past handful of, I mean, probably a more better part of a decade. Fiscal year '15 was pension. Um, so fiscal year '24 is our first breath. Uh, there is not any big, huge lift, uh, standards for fiscal year '24. There are two that are effective for this year. Uh, statement number 101, or 100, uh, which is for accounting changing, changes in error corrections. That's more on my, although I'm on the auditor, I find the auditing standards, you guys are on the accounting, follow the accounting standards. That speaks more to me than it speaks to management. Um, just how would we report if there was an error? How do we correct that? If you were to have a change in your reporting agency, how do we address that in the financial statements? GASBY 99 is an omnibus statement. That means it's a technical correction. It touches a bunch of other prior statements that have already been implemented, and through implementation, other questions have come up, and they provide clarity on how to address those. So it touches a host of things. It was partially effective for '23. The remaining of it is effective for '24. We do not anticipate there to be significant impacts to the fiscal year '24 financial statements. With all that said, fiscal year '25 will bring us back into the major lifts again. Uh, GASBY 101 is compensated absences. Uh, the GASBY 16 is the current standard for compensated absences, which was drawn up in the early 90s. PTO is not a concept, uh, in the 90s. Everything was sick or vacation. Benefit packages from a compensated absence are significantly different, so how would you account for those? And that's what this standard is doing, is to account for those different types of leaves, uh, that are out in the industry today. This will be a major lift, uh, for finance. Uh, it will require a decent number of man-hours to, um, get this accomplished and, and do that lift. So, well, we've already kind of started conversations with that with management, um, but that will be a big change in the fiscal year '25 financial statements. So with that as my prepared presentation, but if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to try to address them for you.
Michael? And Diane?
Thank you for being here. Um, sitting through several of these, the question always has to be asked that this is on documentation of the spending, not the application of the spending, correct?
This is on the fair reporting of what was spent in fiscal year 6/30/23. So what went out the doors accurately and reasonably presented in these financial statements?
But not what it was spent on, just that it was?
Classification is something we look at. So if it's in institutional, if it's in administrative, what bucket does it fall in? Yes, we, we do design tests to ensure that it's reasonably stated in the right buckets.
Okay. Thank you.
Diane? And Chrissy?
All right. Okay, you don't have page numbers on this, but I think this is your revenue page. Oh. How much of that, uh, is, uh, asset funds? For this, for the, I guess for the 2023 year?
That I might not have readily available.
And, and the reason I'm asking is because in this next budget year, which you may or may not be the one to do it, um, it, we should see a dramatic decrease, right?
There will be decreases in the coming years with, with ARPA funding, yes.
Okay. So.
It looks like based on this, um, page 133 of the report, you can see that there was 72 million in COVID-19 Education Stabilization Fund that was expended in this, this year, this reported.
Okay. So, so that means that all of those funds will be, uh, expended by the, by the end of this fiscal year?
They have to be expended or in, fully encumbered by September 30th, 2024, and then completely expended by, all the encumbrances have to be released by December 31st, or December 30th, 2024.
Okay. So does that mean, uh, Madam Superintendent? So does that mean that as we're planning the budget for this year, uh, we will, we will account for as much as we can that as far as, uh, you know, the, the loss of where we need to still?
We've been doing that for the past year. Um, and that will, I mean, some of that has implications for our proposed '24, '25 budget. But yes, I mean, we're in a, a better position than some other places because we've spent the dollars. And we stuck to our plan. We did not tie them up in lots of positions. But we're going to feel it. We're going to feel it on things like perfect attendance bonuses and things that we've heard about tonight that are working for people, um, because those were dependent on federal funding.
Okay. Um, again, I don't see a page number, but, um, the Food Services Fund. Um, and I think this is probably a question for you. Um, how do we look, uh, as far as the future is concerned? Because?
So, right now, it's, it's a challenge. I mean, I know on, um, as Greg mentioned that in the School Food Service Fund, it looks like we, um, increased our net assets, but that was because of the accruals that we made for that pension liability and the, um, other post-employment benefits. Um, when we look at it strictly as a cash basis, we weren't in that good of shape at the end of last year. And as we're looking this year, I mean, it's, it's challenging right now, um, with the reduction in, um, the reimbursement rate and the increase in food costs that we're seeing.
Madam Superintendent, um, I, I think I made this request before. I think it, it, it would be helpful for us to explain again what, uh, having a, what do you call this? A? Enterprise fund. And what the difference is, and what we are either restricted to or not as far as, you know, so that we don't wind up being pushed back against the wall again by the employees thinking that we don't wish to, uh, you know, increase salaries or, you know, and, and for parents to understand that the more they buy in, the, the more that helps us as far as being able to afford, you know, quality food and, and food services. Am I correct?
Sure. So, in, in the enterprise fund, we charge a fee that is supposed to support the expenditures of the, the fund. Um, and so the, if the revenue, you know, doesn't increase at the same rate as the expenditures, then clearly we're, we're not going to have the dollars to support, um, future expenditures in that fund. And because we came off, we're coming off of times when every meal was free to every student, and we were getting a higher reimbursement rate, um, from the USDA for those meals, um, through June 30th, 2022, then, um, you know, we saw the, the fund was in, in relatively good shape at that point. But the impact of inflation on our food cost has been tremendous. And the lower reimbursement rate and having to have a certain, you know, our, our paying students are back to having to pay. And so we're not serving as many meals. So it's, it's really important, um, that we work on increasing participation.
Okay. Do you, can you tell us what is the reimbursement rate versus what we charge? So that there is a difference, right? Okay.
Right. I think the reimbursement rate's about $4.20 on a meal that's free. For, so if a student is served a meal that doesn't have to pay, we get $4.20 from, uh, USDA. If it's a paying student, we do get a much smaller reimbursement. And I can't remember what that is, but I do believe it's less than a dollar. Plus, the student pays $2.85 for that, for that meal.
Okay. So even if the paying student is, uh, is paying $2.80, you said?
$2.85.
Okay, $2.85. But if our reimbursement is less than a dollar, then you still got a gap, right?
Yes.
Unless my map is, math is wrong.
No, that's correct. But we have a, I mean, we have a gap even when we get the full reimbursement between what the meal's costing us now with the food prices.
You know, I, I just feel like it, it needs to be made very clear that, one, this is an enterprise fund, which means it has to pay for itself. And two, that the numbers don't work in terms of what we expect from the federal government and the participation level of our students or of our families. Now, I, I mean, if a family does, I mean, if they can't afford it or don't want to buy lunch, uh, that's their choice. But it does put us in a bind because I don't think we have an option not to serve lunch, do we? You sure?
Yes, it's part of a free, appropriate public education.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Um, Mr. Logan took my first question, which was about sort of the, the scope of the audit and the kinds of things that it looks at. Um, I did see, I'm looking at this document that he gave us that accompanies it, and there was just one line in here that I want to ask about. Um, that says, "We orally communicated to management other deficiencies in internal control identified during our audit that are not considered material weaknesses or significant deficiencies," which makes sense. Um, but I'm curious, how do you determine what that benchmark is for those levels of weakness? If it's something that is going to end up in this report or something that's addressed internally?
Yeah, so sometimes there's just day-to-day transactions that happen that, hey, here's an industry best practice. But the way the transaction is working through the system on the back end and getting reported in the financial statements will not materially change that number in the financial statements. So the short answer is materiality. The really long answer is what is materiality? Because it's not just a dollar threshold of, hey, you have X amount of expenditures. So what percentage is going to make a reader think that, that changed their opinion about the financial statements if this number's wrong? wrong? But there's also a qualitative aspect of it of, if a bunch of laptops went missing at a school, that's going to make the newspaper, so that's probably material, even though the cost of those laptops are probably not material to total expenditures in a given year. So materiality is the main line of what differentiates between a material weakness, significant deficiency, and another deficiency of a comment. Deficiency is also the industry standard term for that line, but more common practice outside of being counting terms is probably best practice is the best terminology in that, for that particular line item. So most of those are just, hey, if you guys tweak this, maybe this might make it a little easier, or hey, you might have IT passwords that update every X days, but maybe Y days is where the industry is going to. So there, nothing out of compliance, nothing that would have a high likelihood of reoccurring or a material impact if it were to reoccur is kind of what falls in that line item.
And I think you sort of answered this in your response just now, but so the process for resolving any of these, kind of for lack of a better word, smaller issues that you might see would be working with internal teams to communicate and make recommendations as to how processes might change, is that right?
Correct, yeah, it's just if we identify something and we'll just have a conversation and say, hey, industry best practices look like they're moving this way, you guys are doing it that way, you might want to take a look at it or not. At the end of the day, it's not a material impact of the financial statements, so that kind of runs into the management wheelhouse of the cost benefit of different controls. We can put in tons of internal controls within an organization, but those controls might cost more money than the money it's saving. So if you want to put in, hire an FTE to watch the petty cash drawer, you're going to pay whatever that salary is to watch $100 for the whole year.
Right.
That wouldn't make sense.
Okay, and so I'm an educator, not a numbers kind of person. Can you define, this may sound silly, can you define the word opinion for me as to how it's used in here? Because I think of accounting as very black and white, and seeing the word opinion just confuses my brain a little bit.
Yeah, there's nothing, I mean, there is black and white, but estimates make a lot of gray within the financial statements, and we're saying that the financial statements are materially accurate so that there isn't a number out in there that is materially inaccurate to where the user who reads the financial statements would change their opinion on how something functions. So if the enterprise fund from a full accrual basis is either making money or not making money, if the numbers change and swings the other way, that would be a material misstatement. So it's not a fact that every single number in here is 100% accurate because I don't look at every single transaction that goes through the trial balance in a given year. I design tests that have statistics behind them to pick out our samples of the ones that we do vouch to. So I can't say everything is 100% accurate in here, but within a materiality threshold, it is reasonably stated in accordance with accounting standards.
Okay, that's super helpful, and I have one last question, which I think is for you, Dr. Oakley. In the expenditures on this chart, it was noted that in 2023, our instructional expenditures have gone down, and in light of learning loss and low test scores and all those things, why are we spending less money on instruction?
It's also as a percentage of total expenditures. It's not the dollar amount itself went down, just the percentage of instructional in relation to total expenditures.
So when we think about how we're spending some of our SFR money on HVAC systems and some of the transportation, those things don't get categorized as instructional, even though they're in a school building or they're getting kids to and from school, they go fall into that other category. And so that's why, again, it's as a percentage, total expenditures were up overall when you look at the ones that had the real dollar values on it, but that's why that percentage is different, and it probably will be again this year, but then I think we'll move back as we go into 2425 in future years, as we lose the SFR money.
Balance that out.
We'll get back to where the 77 is pretty normal, is where we've been for years and years prior to having the federal funding.
Okay, I think that is all of my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
I'm not sure if this is a question that you can answer or not, but can you speak to the health of our financial situation because we don't want to be in the situation that our friends to the east of us are in?
There's been a lot of conversation on scope tonight, and that is not part of the scope of an audit, is to say how good the set of financials look like going forward into the future. I live a lot in the past and look in the rearview mirror to see what, how do we classify the money that was already spent? But I'm not a financial advisor to look forward.
So how did our health look in the past?
So that was kind of where we went through your instructional expenditures are down as a percentage of total expenditures.
I want you to say it, please.
But yeah, so.
So do we look, at least our past performance looks healthy, good? Is that not in the scope either?
The numbers in the financial statements appear reasonable within all material respects to accounting standards.
All right, seems like there are no other questions. Thank you very much for your report. Thank you, Angie and Angie and the whole financial department for all of the hard work and all of the controls and audits and checks and balances that you go through, so thank you. We are now at the Exceptional Children's Report. Thank you, Dr. Oakley.
Good evening, Superintendent Oakley and distinguished board members. We are happy to be here tonight to share information and a portion of the work we do to support our exceptional children in Guilford County. Joining me are our Chief of Exceptional Children and Student Services, Dr. Kimberly Steinkie, and our Senior Executive Director of Exceptional Children Services, Tara Santiago. The focus of this presentation will cover EC student enrollment and demographics, areas of disability within the state of North Carolina, a high-level picture of how EC expenses are funded, the types of classroom environments that are on the EC continuum, and the course of study pathways in which EC students participate.
Good evening, everyone. As I shared throughout the presentation tonight, I will use the phrase "students with disabilities" interchangeably with the term "exceptional children." This is an important distinction as it is specific to our students with individual education plans commonly referred to as IEPs. As of our last official child count in December of 2023, GCS had 9,567 students ages 3 to 21 eligible for EC services. Without including our EC pre-K age children, this accounts for approximately 13.5% of children in our district. GCS has maintained an average of 13 to 14% since at least 2019, which is just under the national average of 15%. The EC child count is collected each school year in December and April through North Carolina's Every Child Accountability and Tracking System, commonly called ECATS, which houses all special education records for students across the state. December child count numbers are used for federal-level funding amounts for EC, while the April child count is what was used for our state-funded budgets. I'll share more about EC funding in the later slide. As you can see in our child count data for the past several years, GCS saw many students in our EC programs leave our schools during the pandemic. However, as you can also see, our EC population is rapidly increasing in Guilford County, bringing us to a higher count now than at pre-pandemic levels. While we cannot say for sure, we do project an increase in our April child count beyond last school year. Here you can see our GCS enrollment demographics in comparison to our EC enrollment. As we continue to focus on serving all students with an equity lens, we are looking at our EC student demographics for ways to support all of our students and to ensure that equitable decisions are made regarding eligibility and placement. When compared with GCS enrollment demographics, we are disproportionate with more Black students identified as disabled by approximately 10 to 11%, while Hispanic, white, and Asian students identified as disabled are comparable to the overall district demographics. Through North Carolina statute and in alignment with the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, there are 14 different categories of disability for which a child can be determined eligible for IEP services. The term "exceptional children" refers to any child who has been identified under one of these categories and whose parent or guardian has agreed to an IEP and services. In GCS, the majority of our EC students are served under the categories of learning disabled, autism, speech-language impaired, and other health impaired. We also have 8% of EC students with intellectual disabilities. All other categories have 5% or fewer students. While the majority of the individual percentages for each disability category typically remain consistent over time, the autism category has grown in GCS from 13% in 2019 to our current 18%. Data is shown here reflecting the growth rates of students with autism across our comparison in neighboring North Carolina districts and the state. In comparison, based on the most recent national data available from the 2021-22 school year, the rate of students with autism nationally was 12%. The increase in this population of students is impacting the services and supports that GCS provides to students and is shifting the efforts of our EC professional learning team to deliver more focused and targeted training opportunities for our teachers, administrators, teacher assistants, and transportation staff, which reflects strategies for serving students in the AU category. As we talk about the students we serve and their various needs, like many other specialized programs, funding to support exceptional children comes from a combination of federal, state, and local funds. The total GCS budget for specifically dedicated EC funding sources in fiscal year 2024 is approximately $75.6 million. This chart provides a very high-level overview of the funding source breakdown from which EC personnel and services are funded. In comparison, the district budget is typically 9% to 10% federal, 60% state, and 30% local Now let's talk about the types of classrooms and schools in which nearly 14% of GCS students are served. We refer to this as our continuum and use this when we speak about the placement and services that students with IEPs receive in our schools. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this slide so that I can share some information about one of the most important concepts and legal mandates in the EC field, the least restrictive environment, commonly referred to as LRE. In EC language, we refer to the placement of a child based on the type of classroom environment setting where the student receives most of their instruction and services throughout the school day. In their entirety, these classroom environments are referred to as a continuum of placements ranging from the least restrictive on the left side of the chart to the most restrictive on the right side of the chart. Ensuring the concept of LRE is met means that to the most extent possible, children with disabilities are educated with children who do not have disabilities. In general, there are five main classroom environment settings in which children are placed. Based on their individual needs and services, students may move through multiple environment settings across this continuum during their educational career. The regular classroom is the least restrictive environment setting for a student with a disability. This LRE provides the student with the most access to their peers who do not have disabilities and is the most natural type of classroom setting. Exceptional children in a regular classroom receive their core academic instruction under the direction of the regular education teacher, with the special education teacher providing specially-designed instruction directly to the student or to a group of students. Various related service providers such as speech-language pathologists, occupational or physical therapists, adaptive PE teachers, and/or vision or hearing teachers will also join the regular education class to provide services to exceptional children. Regardless of the service delivery method and with a focus on inclusionary practices, the most important factor is that the student with a disability is able to remain in the regular education classroom as the least restrictive environment. Currently, approximately 77% of GCS's exceptional children in grades K through 12 spend 80% or more of their day in regular classrooms. In a resource classroom, EC students receive specially-designed instruction for a part of the day. Commonly referred to as a pull-out setting, students in resource classrooms receive support in specific areas of need identified on their IEPs, including but not limited to reading, math, self-advocacy, social-emotional skills, behavior, and/or speech language, just to name a few. Resource classroom support is supplemental or in addition to a child's core academic instruction received in a regular classroom, therefore serving as a reinforcement in the child's opportune area of growth. Services in a resource classroom are not intended to replace a child's time for core instruction by a regular classroom teacher. Approximately 11% of GCS's exceptional children in grades K through 12 spend a portion of their day in resource classrooms. While the goal is always to provide instruction and services to an EC student in the least restrictive environment, sometimes the regular education classroom setting proves to be too overwhelming for a student with a disability. In these cases, and for a variety of individualized reasons, a student's IEP team may determine that a separate classroom, also referred to as a self-contained setting, would be more beneficial for the student. In a separate classroom, students receive all of their core instruction for most or all of the school day, including their special education and related services, under the direction of a special education teacher with some related service providers if needed. Teachers in separate classrooms are required to have certification in special education. Housed in all of our traditional elementary, middle, and high schools within GCS, separate class sizes are smaller than regular education classrooms, and they are typically staffed with an EC teacher assistant to provide additional support. Approximately 9% of GCS's exceptional children in grades K through 12 spend the majority of their day in separate classrooms. As determined by a student's IEP team, sometimes the developmental, cognitive, behavioral, and/or medical needs of a student with a disability require placement in a separate school. GCS's public separate schools include Gateway, Haynes Endman, Harbin Metz, and Christine Joyner-Green, as well as special day treatment programs such as Mel Burton and Crossroads. Separate schools only serve students with IEPs. The students receive all of their instruction, special education, behavioral health, and related services, under the direction of specially-trained EC staff and specially-designed facilities to accommodate their needs. A distinguishing difference in GCS's public separate schools is that Gateway and Haynes Endman serve students who are considered medically fragile with significant disabilities, while Harbin Metz and CJ Green serve students with the most intensive special education services, including a student's educational, behavioral, and communication needs. After hearing about GCS's public separate schools through disability networks, parent resource organizations, advocacy groups, doctors, other districts, and simple word-of-mouth recommendations, families of children with this level of specialized need often relocate to Guilford County for the specific purpose of enrolling in a GCS public separate school. Nearly 3% of GCS's exceptional children in grades K through 12 spend their day in separate school programs, with this being the most restrictive in-person setting for GCS students. Lastly, when a student... Lastly, when a student is identified as having a medical or behavioral health-related type of disability, their IEP team, in consultation with the student's outside physicians or specialists, may determine that the most appropriate setting for the child to receive instruction and services is in their home, at the hospital, or in a residential facility in which children receive care or services for 24 hours a day. EC students in this most restrictive setting do not have access to or interaction with their peers without disabilities. Therefore, IEP teams who consider placements for students in home-hospital programs or residential schools are required to provide a plethora of data and information when determining a student's need for this type of restrictive placement. GCS currently serves about 0.2% of students in grades K through 12 in home-hospital settings.
Thank you, Dr. Stanky. I will now transition to the types of course of study pathways a student with a disability may participate in. Although often confused but not specifically aligned with EC continuum, there are multiple course of study pathways for exceptional children. Pre-K. In GCS, EC instruction and services begin in pre-K, specifically ages 3 to 5. GCS EC pre-K focuses on language development and communication, emotional and social development, play and learning, health and physical development, and cognitive development of our youngest GCS students. Depending on the child's special education needs, services can be provided in a variety of settings. Services are often provided in the child's natural setting, such as home, a daycare, preschool, or a Head Start program. The EC preschool program has special education teachers, speech therapists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists who provide special education to children in these settings. Sometimes, children with intensive needs may need to receive their special education in special class or within GCS facilities. The EC pre-K program has also designated service provider locations in the county. The type of frequency and location of an EC pre-K child's special education services are determined by the child's IEP. At the end of the 2022-2023 school year, our EC pre-K team served nearly 570 children in over 106 individual school and community-based locations. As of the end of January 2024, there were 437 students receiving EC pre-K instruction and services in over 92 locations. These enrollment numbers will continue to grow through the remainder of the school year as they are evaluated and placed. Lastly, the rate of children... oops, sorry. Lastly, the rate of children being referred for EC pre-K services continues to grow, stretching the resources of our EC pre-K intake teams. As of the end of January, our team has received nearly 700 notifications and requests for possible evaluations for this school year. As you can see on the slide, the blue bar represents evaluation requests from the Children's Developmental Service Agencies. The gold bar represents evaluations requested from community providers, such as pediatricians. The red represents evaluation requests for NC pre-K, and the green is the total evaluation request. Student evaluations themselves are trending downward in the areas of speech and language, whereas 70% of evaluations are considered comprehensive and comprised of cognitive, behavioral, and a combination of other assessments. Furthermore, comprehensive evaluations must be completed by several types of personnel, including school psychologists, SLPs, and other specialists with where current vacancies exist. Ultimately, even when all vacancies are filled, we are still understaffed. As exceptional children move into K-12 levels in the state of North Carolina, students with disabilities can take a general curriculum pathway leading to a high school diploma, an adapted curriculum pathway leading to a certificate... Or occupational course of study. The chart... The chart on the next two slides provides a bit more detail on the differences between each pathway and that an EC student can follow. Future-ready standards are intended to build a foundation for students that will prepare them to enter a post-secondary institution of higher education, the workforce, or the military. GCS serves a little over 7,500 EC students on the General Curriculum Future-Ready Standards in grades K through 12. In comparison, the Occupational Course of Study Program is specifically designed for EC students who can benefit from an alternative pathway with vocational emphasis. There are approximately 284 EC students in grades 9 through 12 who are on the Occupational Course of Study. Lastly, in the Adapted Curriculum, provides a pathway for students in need of modifications to meet their individual needs. As it was developed, the Adapted Curriculum Course of Study is based on the grade-level standards of the NC Standard Course of Study with an additional emphasis on functional skills and objectives. There are 143 adapted curriculum classrooms across GCS with 1,032 EC students on this pathway ranging from K through 12. The four public separate schools serve 25% of these students in 45 classrooms, with all public separate students being on the Adapted Curriculum Pathway. Students following the Adapted Curriculum Course of Study receive a graduation certificate at the time of high school exit. They do not receive a high school diploma.
Thank you, Dr. Stanky and Ms. Santiago. As we wrap up tonight's presentation, it is important to recognize the ongoing challenges we face in GCS when serving our exceptional children. GCS is no different than other districts or states when considering the shortage of specialized personnel, such as EC teachers, school psychologists, speech-language pathologists, and/or mental health professionals. Similarly, you've heard in recent board presentations about the shortage of bus drivers and transportation staff. Whether the task is completing evaluations in a timely manner for EC pre-K students or ensuring special transportation services as a part of a student's IEP, providing services to children with disabilities is certainly a challenge because of restrictive funding formulas and staffing factors. Yet, every day, our teachers, teacher assistants, district support staff, and other specialized personnel do everything they can to make sure some of our most vulnerable students receive all the support they possibly can. Thank you for your time this evening. We will now take questions.
Chrissy?
Thank you so much. Dr. Stanky, could you go back over the chart on page 10, the EC funding sources? You were giving comparisons that I just didn't quite catch, and I wanted to write down as far as the numbers. It's the pie chart. Yep.
Yep. So, our total budget just for EC funding sources for the year is $75.6 million.
Mm-hmm.
And the chart at the top breaks that down as far as 26% of its federal, 7% local, 67% state. But in comparison to the overall district budget...
Yes, that was the part I missed.
The overall district budget is typically 9% to 10% federal, 60% state, and 30% local funds.
Okay, thank you. And then, I think I have one other question. On page 21 is where I wrote this down, but it's kind of a general question. How long is the evaluation process to get student services and get them all the intake pieces and into actually getting service?
By law, it's supposed to be no more than 90 days from the time the parent or whoever requests the evaluation to the day that an IEP or child is determined eligible and an IEP is developed.
And are we...
That's what it's supposed to be by law.
Are we able to hit that?
No, not at all.
And what's the reason? Staffing?
Staffing, the increase in referrals that are coming in. Those two things.
I'll say, pre-K is the hardest spot to get it because we're talking about three- and four-year-olds who are getting referrals from community agencies, pediatricians, and it's all year long. It doesn't stop. So, screening on weekends, evenings, no matter how many intake teams we deploy, the referrals are...
Just keep coming.
Just keep coming. We do a better job. I mean, it's a little bit different in the K-12 space because of how we're staffed and we're able to meet that deadline more of the time. But in EC pre-K, it is tremendously backlog.
And of the students who a referral has been requested for them, how many, like approximate percentage? How many of them get accepted? How many get denied for getting service? Are we seeing that the majority of referrals, there is a need for? That's kind of my guess, but...
Yeah, I mean, we can come back with some quantified data, but the majority of students who are found to be eligible is higher than it has been in the... You know what I mean? There are many more students with many more needs coming than in the past. It's our fastest-growing... Where we're seeing some enrollment declines, this one is going the opposite direction.
Okay, that's sort of what I expected you to say. I just, I wanted to make sure that we're not getting a massive influx of requests for services that aren't needed, that are taking up time from the kids who absolutely need it.
They're needed, yeah.
Excellent. Great. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Kim, then Michael, then Diane. In reference to the 13.5% of students that are in, under this umbrella, are they spread across the 126 schools? Or do you find that some schools... Do you try to balance the impact of the number of EC students that are being served in any school so that one school is not impacted more with having to provide services?
No, our goal is for every child to be served in their zone school where they live, their neighborhood school. So, we don't set any kind of parameters or anything that says the school has too many students with disabilities, so we want to move them somewhere else.
Unless they need an adapted curriculum class or a regional behavior support class, unless it's a very specialized type of need that would warrant that. But if they're on the general curriculum or receiving resource, they do that in their home zone school.
Yep.
Okay. I just see that as some schools being more impacted than other schools? And then, are they being supported the way that they need to be supported?
So, I mean, we allot staff based on caseload. The number of students drives the caseload. I understand what you're saying, but I think we would invite some legal risks if we said that your homeschool wouldn't be an option because we're over... I mean, especially for those types, those students with those types of disabilities.
But even though it could impact their learning environment, though, right? If you have so many students that a principal and the staff is... I'm just thinking.
It's our obligation to provide that.
We are providing the education, but are we mandated to provide it only at their homeschool?
Well, there are times where we can't provide it at the homeschool, as Dr. Oakley has said.
Right, so that's the only time.
By and large, the default presumption is that we can meet the needs at a homeschool. If there's a reason that we cannot, or that there are specialized services that we need, then the IEP team makes that determination when they talk about the services that a child needs. But by and large, it's the goal to serve children at their homeschools.
Okay. In reference to the increase of students in Guilford being identified with autism, is this an area where you think there is over-identification? Or that cannot, that's not a possibility with autism being identified?
We don't believe that it's over-identification. No.
Keep in mind that the DSM, which is the definition of terms, medical terms that are used for things like autism, has changed a lot in the last few years, and that probably has altered who's identified by what. And we've also eliminated, what was it? The developmental delay over a certain year. And so that children with communication delays that were previously probably put in that category have been shifted. So, some of it's just a change in the way the medical and psychological community looks at challenges.
On page 10, in reference to EC funding, have we seen an increase in funding over the years in our buckets from federal, state? I know federal, pretty much, that's a whole nother story. They're not meeting the goal at all of what they owe us. But the state and the local, have we had an increase in our funding, or is that something that we definitely need to advocate?
The state funds... The only increases we see is if we see an increase in the population, because of course they fund by per pupil. But there hasn't been any changes as far as the formula or anything that would provide us more.
Okay, no change in that formula. Same thing with the local funding, though?
Correct. Local's not changed.
Is 7% what's required, or we could get more?
There's no, that I know of, and Jill might can answer. I don't know that there's any law that says locally a school district has to provide something. Other than, let me back up, I'm sorry. There is a maintenance of effort requirement under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act that says school districts have to expend a certain amount of money towards students with disabilities each year, and they have to maintain that level of effort. So, we are...
We're good on our part.
We're doing our part, yes.
So, then going further, could that be something for the county commissioners, I'll ask?
If that was something that...
If that was something that we wanted to do. Okay. The cost of the home and hospital residential school, is that a separate presentation in understanding how that operates?
As far as cost?
Yeah, like is the cost to the district, or who covers that?
It's cost to the district. If the IEP team determines that that's the most appropriate setting for a child,
For a child.
Then yes, we're required to provide those services at our cost. That's part of their pre-appropriate public education.
Okay. I'm sorry. Guilford County School is responsible for every child in the county that requests to be tested?
Yes, ma'am.
They're responsible for the testing, yes.
Okay. And I just wanted to know by chance, how is the exchange between the Exceptional Children's Department and our general education? Like, what can they learn from your department as best practices that could be... Because I just find that the four separate schools, I love those schools in particular. And I wish general ed children had that environment that is so designed, you know, in the classroom. But I'm sure that there are some best practices that our exceptional teachers have that can really roll into the rest of our schools because of the level of training that they have.
We work collaboratively with all departments to help support all students because a lot of the practices that we use daily really are good for all children.
Okay. And I just need clarity on page twenty-four, when you said something about there are a hundred and forty-three, and you gave us some data, but I don't see it here.
There's a hundred and forty-three adapted curriculum classrooms across all of our schools. So when you look at a hundred and twenty-four schools collectively, there's a hundred and forty-three classrooms, and in those classrooms is a total of one thousand thirty-two students who are on the adapted curriculum pathway.
Okay, thank you. Michael, then Diane, then Betty.
Thank you for what you do. I work with some of the coolest kids in the schools, really do. Thirteen and a half percent identified as EC. How does that equate from pre-K, K-12? Is that just an average percentage? Is it a higher percentage, lower?
There's a higher percentage of identified students in elementary schools, mostly because there's sometimes things like specific learning disabilities that they're able to exit that disability status, given what supports are in place. I mean, we clearly have kids across the board, but the higher numbers are in pre-K and elementary school. And then as students exit, the numbers decline some.
Okay, well, that kind of answered my other questions. With eleven percent in resource and seventy-seven percent in regular classroom, we are increasing the achievement of kids to remove them from resource classroom to the regular classroom and hopefully not even being identified in some cases. So thank you for that. With that going on, going into the curriculum pathways, and I know from a teacher's standpoint, and particularly in the workforce development classes, I have seen instances where there are some safety concerns with some of the EC students being placed in a work class. And with that safety concern, it actually detracts away from some of the other students because the teacher literally has to have a focus on the EC student. I would love to look to see having more assistance with those workforce teachers because the reality is sometimes those are some of the best kids. But as an educator or the classroom educator, you're having to put more of a focus on that one child, and it is a safety concern with some of the other children within that classroom or young adults.
I would say that's true in all classrooms. But that's why we, I mean, the IEP team has to, but I hear you, like with equipment and hands-on and things of that nature. I just think we're going to have to advocate for that because we're not getting funded for those positions.
And we do, we collaborate closely with CTE to meet those students' needs.
And the reason I point that out is, in some of the CTE classes, not only will you get hurt, it'll kill you. So car falls on you, welder electrocutes you. It's not an English class, it's not a social studies class, it's not a history class. So there is safety concerns within those areas. But thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you. Diane, then Betty, then Kim.
Okay, starting on page six. In what categories do you, are the children, particularly the African-American number, which is concerning, is some of this behavior or is it versus disability?
I'm not sure I'm following.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm asking you is, do you have that fifty-three point one percent based on the category they fall into? How many fall into?
We do have that. I don't have it right now. Maybe we can bring that back later, that breakdown.
Okay, and then the other part of that question is, is this behavior or is this disability? Because I've seen kids railroaded into EC because of behavior that wasn't necessarily a disability.
It depends on the kid. I think while we have a lot of work left to do in disproportionality, it's better than it was in eighteen nineteen. We have better tools to use. We have to do things by state law with MTSS that forces data progress monitoring, things that might have slipped through the cracks before. But we're not done. I mean, we have a lot left to do. But we see, I mean, ADHD, other health impaired, mild, you know, those kinds of things. It's just like the rest of the country data when we disaggregate it by race. There has been a little bit of progress, but not sustained and not enough.
Well, on page seven, this is kind of the same kind of question. Is there a breakdown based on sex and race for each of these categories? So that you're looking at, not that you got to give it to me, but you know-
We are and we can, yes, that report exists.
Do we show when students can move from a more restrictive environment to least restrictive environment or even out of? Because for some kids, the goal has been that they eventually, though may still be supported by IEP, can move even into regular classroom.
Yes, ma'am. We do, that is the goal, absolutely, of IEP teams, is to make sure that a child is in the least restrictive environment with whatever supports they need. So if we have a child that is making, is in a separate classroom right now and is making progress, and we believe that they could, you know, benefit from a regular education classroom, even if we have to send an additional layer of support in there for them, we will do that. That's exactly what IEP teams are charged with doing.
Okay, page thirteen. Can you explain examples of what support the regular classroom gets when you have a student that's, you know, like totally in a regular classroom, but, you know, because, you know, the regular ed teacher then has to figure out how to adapt either the learning styles, needs, whatever. Do you understand my question? All right.
It's always individualized based on each student's needs. So based on what is in their IEP and what we've found that they need based on data to help them access the general curriculum.
Okay.
Which could, it could look like a variety of things. It could look like a special education teacher going in and working alongside the regular education teacher and training the teacher in how to support students. It could mean setting in a piece of equipment for that child. It could mean providing some kind of specialized seating for them.
Or an EC teacher even.
It could be a whole lot of different things.
Well, I just think it's important for us to not make it appear that the regular ed teacher then has this kid or kids who have, you know, some additional needs, and either the child gets lost in that classroom, or the teacher doesn't feel equipped to handle the needs of that child. I know that the regular ed teacher is supposed to be in the IEP meeting, but being in IEP meeting and being able to teach, provide the service for this child are two different things.
Right. Well, and that's why our partnership with our general education teachers and Doctor, and Ms. Manus's division is so important, and the collaboration that we have with our general education teachers.
Okay. Do you ever get any, like, what would you say is the main request you get from regular ed teachers to support EC students in their classroom?
Behavior support.
Behavior.
Behavior support.
And how are we dealing with that?
I mean, we use data. We have, we have behavior support personnel that we are able to deploy when we have the data to support that. We also have students that have behavior needs that don't have an IEP. That wouldn't fall, you know what I mean? So there's this, but as we see those increasing behaviors, that's the number one request that we get, access to mental health and behavior supports within schools.
Are we in a better position to make available the mental health support?
Yes, because of the grants that we've secured that Dr. Tabory leads, but we're, we're not gaining positions from the state level to support these increased behavior services that we are seeing a need for. So it's not just one thing that's going to fix it or check the box. It's going to be layering in different kinds of supports along the way.
Okay, this was not one of my original questions, but I heard another colleague asked a question about the length of time it takes to, from identification to certification thing. And the one piece I didn't hear you respond with is the parental participation and support. Because I know that sometimes parents aren't on board. Sometimes, you know, parents come to us saying, I think there's a problem. But, you know, the parental piece is a part of sometimes where the, the time takes longer. Is that not correct?
It can be. I mean, you know, ideally, the parents are part of the process. They come in and they make their request, and then we have to obviously get consent from them to do any kind of testing or anything for the child. But we might have situations, unfortunately, where parents aren't able to make their children available as much as we might need them to, and that can delay the process. But in those situations, that's why we reach out to our social workers and our different service providers to be able to go and help families get through that process.
I just think it's important, as we're talking about this, that parents are a component, and they need to be acknowledged as a component.
We can't do it without parents.
Okay, all right. All right, page sixteen. Can you speak to, I heard you allude to the fact that, and we've had people come up here and tell us that they've relocated to Guilford County specifically because of our separate schools. Can you speak to the uniqueness of this, in particular the fact that the uniqueness of this in a public education setting?
So our public separate schools, and if you've never been to one, obviously, you know, I think all of you have, of course, but not only do they have, they have specialized facilities, of course, that can meet the needs of children with specific disabilities. Staff to student ratios are smaller, lower. Staff are trained in additional methods and strategies and things to support them. There's other service providers such as nurses, occupational therapists, physical therapists that are there full-time. It's just a, it's just a different type of a setting a lot of times with those children because they have so specialized needs.
Okay, but in your professional opinion, how many places have you seen or heard as far as school systems that support the kind of services we provide?
In North Carolina, since I've been here, Guilford is one of the main ones that I've heard about in this area. I mean, my prior experience is in a different state, so it's a little bit different there, but it's just different because it's where I was centrally in Florida, you know, Disneyland, there's all kinds of things there that we're able to do. So-
What about costs? Because to have separate schools, there's got to be an increase in costs from, from a regular school.
Yes, absolutely. We can't put a specific amount on that cost because every child's educational services are different. So, you know, one student may have one cost, and then the student right next to them has something different. We can put a cost on things like a nurse, for example, what we pay for that. But as far as individual students and what that extra is, we-
Okay, from a high to a low? I mean, in, in the, especially the separate schools, I'm not talking about the kids who are in the-
You, I mean, you're talking into the tens of thousands of dollars, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars a student.
And parents don't have to pick up any of that, right?
Parents pay zero for that.
Okay. I, I think that's important because if, if we, if we understand the uniqueness of one public school, second, the uniqueness of this particular service that is more expensive than, you know, per child, I think it's important for us to, to say that publicly for people who are keep, you know, bashing whether public schools are doing a job or not. That's why I'm asking.
I don't believe there's any, any setting that a child can receive more services as a special education student than in a public school.
Now, my last question was actually a request, and I still think it's important that at some point I would like for, for y'all to show us what adaptive curriculum looks like. Because I think, you know, I, I know, but I think it's helpful for this board to, to see it, and if we can do it in a way that's not violating, you know, the confidentiality invasive, but, I mean, there's a lot of adaptive things, whether you're talking about for sight, for hearing, for, I mean, we got, some of us got a taste of that when we had our previous superintendent, because we had to have some certain things that were adapted. And I think before that, there wasn't a, you know, nobody really paid attention to that particular, you know, need. But I, I think it's important for us to see that and understand what that means, even if we had to do it all one-on-one or something like that. That's my request. Because I find it fascinating, but also I know that we were talking about in some settings in the city, adaptive, making things adaptive, you know, twenty-five years ago. So it hasn't been that most popular thing, and we need to make sure that there are kids who can be gainfully employed if they're trained to use adaptive equipment before they go into the, and they can advocate for themselves.
Correct.
So that they can get a job. Just because you're in a wheelchair does not mean you cannot work. Or just because you have sight or hearing, that doesn't mean you cannot be gainfully employed. So that's, that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty, and then Kim.
Yes, thank you very much for the great presentation. Just have a few questions. When you have so many students that's trying to get into the pre-K program, I know you cannot accept all of them. So what happens to the students that's not enrolled?
So one of the things is that because we have a variety of ways that we deliver services, we're able to typically reach each child. You know, we have some children that, of course, come to us and they're in a classroom every day with us. We have our service provider locations where children come there for individualized services specific to their IEP. We obviously have a ton of staff that go out into daycares, churches, homes, you know, all kinds of places to serve children that way. So when the IEP team is meeting and determining what level of service is best for that child and what that looks like, that's when they make those decisions on what type of environment is, are those services going to be received.
Okay. The school does a great job as far as meeting the needs of the students and their families. So I know that the social worker and the counselor helped you navigate through that process, and thanking them so much for that. As far as the one-on-one that you have with some students, what percentage you think we have as far as one-on-ones with our students?
We'd have to bring that back.
That's fine. Okay. And I will say that the program you have, the partnership with Project Search, that is a tremendous program. So kudos for you and for the leadership of Project Search. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim.
I would like to know, what is the exiting requirement? Because is it not based on the fact that if my child passes a state exam, then it looks like some of the services begin to go away because my child now scored on the state exam?
Are you referring to exiting from an IEP?
Exiting from an IEP.
So every child, once they're evaluated and determined eligible, is required to have a three-year reevaluation. So every three years, the IEP team has to do a whole complete evaluation again, just like they might have done at the beginning. Now, there might be some pieces that they decide to do differently, but they're responsible for determining if that child is still considered a child with a disability under one of those fourteen categories. So if the child has autism, and that's what the IEP is for, they go back through the autism eligibility to determine if the child still meets that on an, for an educational purpose. And if they don't, they might consider exiting them from an IEP.
But we wouldn't exit based on a EOG score.
Right. They may have scored that EOG score because they had special education. So taking the special education away would be counterintuitive. In other words, it depends, you would only take away the special education if they show they don't need it. But if they pass the exam because they had specialized education, you would never take that away.
So showing that a child doesn't need the services is never based on a state exam here?
No.
Oh, no.
Okay, okay, calm down. Could a parent decide to get their own testing and bring the results back to the district?
Yes, absolutely.
So that's always an option. And in reference to the cost, our tax dollars pay for these services. It's not like it is free. Parents are paying. The money is definitely, our taxes are paying for these services. So it's not that it's not free or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I was trying to figure out what I was going to ask Dr. Oakley and what I was going to ask you all. So a couple of questions, particularly around the over-represent- Um, so a couple of questions, particularly around the over-representation. So, we have about ninety-five hundred students that are identified as EC, right? And more than half of them, even though African-American students represent forty-two percent of the population, fifty-three percent. So, there's disproportionality here, which is always a red flag, because when we look at all of the other subgroups, black students are the only ones that are overrepresented, their numbers in the EC population are larger than their numbers in the, in the, um, in, in the district. Um, and so, um, do we know, do we have any way of knowing if they're benefiting from the programs? You know, if they're overrepresented in the, you know, in this area, do we have any way of knowing if they're benefiting?
Well, when we look at student performance overall, and, and, um, you know, it comes down to the question of, are they progressing academically and behaviorally because of the support of whatever their IEP, IEP services are? And if you were to take those away, I think like Jill was saying a minute ago, would they still continue to perform? Then that's where, that's where the question is. What level do they need those services to determine if they're performing? Um, and that's where the, that's where you see the benefit or not.
Do we have enough data to have any kind of a trend analysis? That's, and is it trending up or down? And I mean.
As far as the identification? Oh, yeah, we, we have that data.
We just have to make sure we remember that they all left and now they're all coming back. So, we're gonna have to look pre-pandemic, post-pandemic. But in terms of identification, trends, race, and gender, we can provide that.
And I'm not talking about a year or two, I know, and maybe you can say more about it, since our enrollment numbers are challenging, why are our numbers in this area, um, you know, not suffering or not, not being challenged? What's going on there?
So.
And odds are, the harder you are to educate, the more likely parents are to put them in public education.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, I think, um, we have one specialized school that serves students with disabilities. It's a private school here that, um, has a high tuition rate. We have lots of students who leave us and come back because of the comprehensive supports that we're able to provide. We also know that private and charter schools can exit students based on behavior, and we can't. Um, you know, we have to serve students no matter what needs they come to us with, and we don't get to say no when you fill out an application. And so, we're uniquely positioned to serve all students. I think that has a big part to do with that, that population increasing. Um, there are, there are good things that people that have access and wealth can access that we can't always necessarily provide. But I think our, you know, the fact that we take all kids is what's making that number go up.
Thank you, um, I think that's important, important to say, um, because of the support that we give. Um, when you present this data to, you know, our, our staff, I mean, because I believe that how you diagnose a problem determines how you, how you respond to it and how you treat it, what are some of the possible explanations that they give about the disproportionality? And my concern is, is that if it was just in this particular area, um, then maybe there's something going on here. But when it's similar to loan and appraisals, when it's similar to what's happening in regards to delayed diagnosis of appendicitis, when it's beside maternal and child health, you know, and it exists across all of those sort of, on that continuum of, of experiences, what do, what do they say? Or, or have they had an opportunity? Because I think it's important to know where people are, because you can't help them if we don't know where they are and what they say about that.
I can't say that we've had the discussion at that pointed level, but in my experience, it comes down to a lot of the same factors that we see with other children coming out of poverty. You know, and the, the idea that like Dr. Oakley said, you know, they left and now they're coming back. They don't have the resources that we'd like them to have, and that ends up being reasons that families or teachers or providers recommend that they receive some kind of services with an IEP. Um, I, maybe I'm not answering your question.
Yeah, I don't, well, one, I think it's a good question to ask, because I think it's important to know where people are, um, because they might need some more information about that, because the initial identification can be very subjective.
Well, and I can say that we are, we are monitored based on federal law and state law. We're monitored based on how we serve kids with IEPs. That's been since, I, I can't remember when that started. Um, and there's two indicators in that scorecard that are specific to disproportionality. It's based on the percentage of students who are identified as disabled and the percentage that are identified within the individual categories. And in all of those, it's always disproportionate to black students. It's been that way since I can remember.
Yeah, um, and that's why I think it's important to, to, you know, just sort of find out where people are around that. Is there any way to calculate, um, the risk ratio? And, and going back to what you just said, is there anything in the two thousand sixteen IDEA Act that allows us to control for or to examine, uh, across socioeconomic status?
Well, the risk ratio you just mentioned is exactly what those two indicators are that I just talked about.
Okay.
Um, and then what was the second part of the question?
So, just, uh, do, do we have the ability to control for socioeconomic status? Because I can imagine that's true for all racial subgroups.
It is, and there are, um, there's a term for it, I forget, uh, Dr. DeBorey, you could help me. There's a term where, yes, we can account for those types of socio-economic factors.
Yeah, because I, if we looked at it, like Hispanic or white students, um, and we, when we look at race and class, we see something different.
Right.
Um, that while, um, and, and I think this was in a presentation done years ago, that white students, um, who were underperforming or that were poor had better scores and experiences than black students who were not. And so, I'm just wondering if we have that, because there are racial gaps at every income level, high income, low income, and, and different performance levels, you know, students that were performing well, students that were not performing well. So, there's something going on that I think we need to get to, because there are other, other factors. But there are also, um, the way that people make decisions based on things. And I get concerned when people go in communities, because when you go in communities, people get associated with their geographic space. And so, when you do home visits without the contextual information, then it just reinforces some, you know, ideas that you might have about children and their families. And I know that the North Carolina Department of Public Health, um, did some research on like racially segregated neighborhoods, which we have right here in, in Guilford County, and especially the data's available to us very granularly through census tracts, but that, um, racially segregated neighborhoods in, in our state, that black students had really high exposure to blood lead concentrations. And the CDC said there is no safe blood level for children.
Right.
And what does blood lead levels do in regards to this category? Are you familiar?
Uh, I mean, there's correlation studies all over the place, particularly for young kids. Um, but I think to your point, um, the implicit bias from the beginning of an evaluation to how long a student stays in is impacting the data. And when we control for poverty, race will still be the biggest predictor of kids who can identify. And it's across all the sectors that you remind us of all the time. But I do think we can go back and slice it over a long period of time to ask the right questions and see where, where, where people are, because there hasn't been much progress. The numbers look very similar to when we looked at it.
And I think when we're talking about poverty, it, it seems like a, you know, and is a, um, a factor, but it doesn't seem to be the same factor across, you know, within other racial subgroups. So, that means there's something else going on here that we need to question.
I got you.
But nobody else can hear you.
Lead concentration in the bloodstream will compact, uh, uh, impact cognition, especially the younger, even, that's why they say no amount of lead in the bloodstream is safe, especially with the younger you go. Any concentration can impact brain development and cognition function.
And a decline in IQ over time. And so, um, so anyway, I just think that, one, we need more information, and it's helpful to know where our folks are in regards to what are their explanations. And it's not to, you know, if people don't know, they just don't know. But we can't do something about what we don't know they don't know. And that's why I think it's important to just, um, you know, um, engage people in a conversation about what are the possible explanations about why this disproportionality exists and what can we do about that? So, thank you, any other questions? Oh, Diane?
Um, I, I know this probably something he would like to give an intern, but the city of Greensboro Housing does know and have data on where there have been housing with lead concentrations, because I don't know if they still have a program, but they used to have a program to try to, uh, go into housing homes and, you know, mitigate the, the lead. But I, I think that if, like, if you were to say a certain area of the city where we know there was, uh, a lot of lead housing, and then look at who lived there, which was more than likely black and brown people, then looked at those kids coming to school. I mean, I'm just saying, i- 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 we need to also, the problem is bigger than us. Uh, and so, if we're still seeing that, we need to ask the city if they would share their data about where they've identified concentration of housing that still perhaps has, uh, lead potential.
Yeah, I mean, and I've talked about this before, it was the asthma project, because like twenty percent of the emergency asthma-related, um, people that came there came from one housing complex, Avalon Trace here. And it wasn't because there was just a bunch of families there that had asthma problems. It was because of the lack of code compliance in the apartment complex. And so, that's just one of many factors, because when kids are coming to school with respiratory distress and other things, I mean, all those things start to add up over time, but it's really hard to see those sort of structural arrangements, um, because we just don't have that lens. And that's why I think every opportunity that we have to just engage people in, um, a sort of deeper analysis and, and conversation about what's going on, then those things will come up for them when they're assessing or making recommendations. Yes.
Um, in reference to moving children from the most restrictive environment into the least restrictive environments, do we track that kind of data and how successful we are with moving children? Or do we ever compare who's doing what at what school that's doing well at moving children?
We do, yes. That's important for us to know, because we've put a lot of work into our programs that we use with our children. So, to see like what are the outcomes and how is this working lets us know, um, you know, is our work working?
Those, those percentages on that continuum where I said like seventy-seven percent, nine percent, we look at those every year, like on a, on a trend basis. So, if we see the seventy-seven percent increasing and the nine percent decreasing, I mean, that's how we kind of monitor that too as far as across the full continuum.
All right, well, thank you very much. We are now at, um, committee reports, and I'll turn to Board Member Bellamy Small for the Policy Committee Report.
At our February the seventh, uh, meeting, the Policy Committee voted to send four policy recommendations out for thirty-day public comment from the period of February twentieth through March the twenty-first. The policy revisions we are proposing are recommended to support our long-range, long-range, excuse me, facilities master plan. First, a new title is recommended for policy thirty-one oh-four, magnet or optional schools and programs to reflect our current language. The proposal, proposed title is choice schools and programs. The policy language has been reorganized to move the objectives and pl- uh, planning principles to the beginning. And the enrollment portion has been revised to reflect our current offering and process. This policy was last revised in twenty-ten. Next, the revision of policy forty-one fifty, school assignments is recommended to move the guide, guiding principles to the beginning and to clarify how student assignments are made, as well as the difference between the choice process and the reassignment process. This revision also aligns the board, board hearing pot, process for appeal with the board hearing process for appeals in policy four, forty-three hundred, student discipline, which was approved in December. Policy sixty, uh, excuse me, six, uh, sixty-four hundred, equal opportunity contracting revised to conform to uh, current protected classes and to clarify that our efforts are focused on increasing representation in bidding and application in alignment with the law. Internal references have also been refreshed since this policy was last revised in nineteen ninety-four. And then finally, we propose a new policy, policy nine zero zero zero, planning for facility needs. This new policy was drafted based on the expertise of staff and models from North Carolina School Board Association and peer districts. It reflects this board's vision and expectations for an ongoing, long-range facilities master planning process in collaboration with the Board of County Commissioners. As a reminder, you can view the revisions in detail in the atta, uh, in, in the attachment to the Policy Committee Report in the Board Agenda. They will be featured on the GCS website and social media channels after this meeting. These policy recommendations will come back to the Board for discussion at our April meeting after the public, uh, comment period, uh, has closed. And I want to thank, uh, my, uh, committee members, Ms. Napper and Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you. Okay, Kim?
Did you reference, um, a school discipline policy tonight?
Yes, only to say that this revision also aligns the board's hearing policy for appeals with the board hearing policies for appeals in policy forty-three hundred, student discipline, which was approved in December.
I was trying to figure out where that was in my packet, what she was referencing.
I don't believe it is in your packet, it's the, um, the notes that she was reading from.
So, it's definitely not something that's going out for public comment, am I correct? She's just referencing something that went out.
That has already been approved.
That has already been approved, but, okay.
What's going out for public comment is forty-one fifty, school assignment.
I was just trying to see what the connection was to the discipline policy and reference to what is going out. So, can I get clarity on that? Huh? Because you mentioned it, so I just, I didn't connect them to which policy that's going out that school discipline is referencing that it aligns with.
The changes in the revised policy forty-one fifty to the board appeals process are similar to the changes that already was approved by the board to policy forty-three hundred.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Michael?
I did want to point out to the public that, um, on forty, on the choice magnet program, that will lead to savings, which will be a benefit for all students. Uh, forty-one fifty, there are some concerns because it does take the power of the board, the power of parents coming and speaking to the board for the appeals process there, um, on the attendance zones. And on the equal opportunity contracting, that doesn't increase costs, because we still go with the lowest bidder.
All right, we are now at the Legislative Committee Report, Kim Erby?
Thank you. Um, the Guilford County Board of Education Legislative Committee convened to revise our legislative agenda in alignment with the district's Better Together strategic direction. These areas include recruiting, retaining, and rewarding top talent, accelerating learning, strengthening health, wellness, and safety in schools, and preparing students for the world. The proposed actions in the twenty-twenty-four legislative agenda include increasing state-funded base pay for teachers, investing in higher wages for classified staff, providing recruitment and retention bonuses, funding high dosage tutoring programs and learning hubs, increasing pre-K allocations, assisting in identifying and serving children with disabilities, providing flexibility in school calendars, boy, do we need that, providing funding. flexibility in school calendars, boy, do we need that, providing funding to hire more counselors, psychologists, and social workers, transitioning to electric school buses, providing free school meals to all students, offering in-state tuition rates for undocumented students, and expanding career and technology education programs. All the items on the 2024 Legislative Agenda aim to improve outcomes and support the holistic development of all students in Guilford County. We present this legislative agenda for your approval tonight.
The, one was a report and then one was the action item, correct? So one, you just had the Legislative Committee Report?
Yes.
Okay, and then it says under action items, okay, the Legislative Agenda. Diane? Well, can we get a motion first? A second? Did you make the motion?
Well, I was hoping someone from my committee would rather make the motion.
I would move that we adopt the Legislative Agenda.
Okay, is there a second? Second, all right, thank you. Diane?
Madam Chair, I think that the Legislative Agenda is on point. There are two things though. Under recruitment and retention and reward, I would like to ask that we put some language in it to talk about funding for staff development because we know that it's important not only to recruit, retain, recruit, retain, and reward folk, but we also want to make sure that we are able to train them, whether it's in the curriculum area or whether it's, I've also advocated for professional development for classified staff. So we can ask whether we get it or not, but I just think that we need more than just get bodies in the rooms. We need to also be able to have funding for staff, for staff development. So do you have problems with adding some language there?
I would say that so long as it doesn't take resources away from these other priorities to increase pay, which sometimes professional development language can be seen as undermining attempts to put money into actual, an increase in salary. And so I would not want that to be, to undermine those efforts or to be antithetical to them.
Okay, well, I would.
Just to say, I would want the priority to be the increase in pay above all else.
In reference to professional development, you're asking that we advocate that directly because these are our legislative priorities directly to increase directly to Guilford County?
Well, this also gives, you know, this is your state legislative priorities. So this also gets shared with our state delegation.
Right, that's what this is for.
Right. So that's where the ask, in my opinion, should start is, you know, at that level. But, you know, to say that to do staff development jeopardizes getting higher pay, one washes the other's hand. If folk are more qualified or get more training, then that even justifies more pay.
If we say it that way, but if we're talking about a finite set of resources, I just would want the most possible to go to pay. So if we said something like to advocate for increased professional development to further advancement opportunities or something like that.
In reference to, you know, these priorities, this is what teachers were asking for. And I think that we prioritize based on what their ask was and what the information that was presented to us. So I'm not sure if we gain anything by adding that language to these priorities. And one thing that we have to remember is that we don't want to overwhelm our delegation with our ask because we've done that before in the past. We've asked for a litany of things and unfortunately, we've not gotten those things. So one thing in this legislative agenda, we've tried to streamline what our ask and make it realistic to the Guilford delegation as well.
Okay, well, you know, one of the sayings is ask not get not. All I'm saying is we do need to look at where dollars come from to, to train. So, and then the other thing on your calendar, I just came back from the North Carolina School Board Association and there's one person holding up the ability to have us go back to being able to decide what our calendar should be. One legislator is holding up that process. So since I don't want to get, you know, attacked on out to my car, I just tell he's in Ranoff in Rockingham County, okay? So just know that that's where the holdup is.
Thank you. Can we call for the vote?
Yes, as long as there's no more questions. Diane? Chrissy? Alan?
Yes.
Betty? Yes, Deborah?
Yes.
Michael? Kim?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. That passes by a vote of seven to one. All right, we're now at Board Member Comments and Pastor Sherez. Oh, shoot, we do. All right, well, we have closed session and we are going to come out and take action, so, correct? All right, so if anybody wants to stick around for that. Okay, all right, same motion, just the...
Without the...
The whole deal, okay.
Karamba, Jill, I love you. I kind of discarded that one, Jill. I got it here. I move that we go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss personnel matters protected by law and to give advice and instruction to our staff and attorney regarding the proposed purchase of real property.
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, we're going into closed session and we will be coming out taking action, correct, Jill?
Yes.